Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, May seventeenth. I now call the order that May seventeenth is the sixth session of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Stoughton. This meeting is now in session. This town meeting is being held in person at the Stoughton High School Auditorium at 232 Pearl Street. This meeting is also being broadcast live through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation and is also being recorded for future broadcasting. Please rise and stand if you are able and join me in pledging allegiance to our country's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you all, please be seated. A reminder, as I reminded each evening, please silence your phones. You're welcome, John Inzavino, Precinct Four, right? Okay. All right, we now need to determine if we have a quorum so we can do the town's business. All right, we're going to start with the precinct chairs. Juan Fox, Precinct One. Eight. George Stolinski, Precinct Two. Fourteen. Matt Callis, Precinct Three. Ten. Julie Gito, Precinct Four. Twelve. Carmel Drews, Precinct Five. Twelve. Christine Yakabuchi, Precinct Six.
Robert Kirby standing in. Eleven.
Eleven. Robert Kirby, Precinct Six, eleven. Diane Dolan, Precinct Seven. Eleven. And David Sheehan, Precinct Eight. Nine. Stand by for the quorum count. Eighty-seven. So, we had eighty-six on Monday evening and it grew a little larger as the night went on. We have eighty-seven. So, please stay in your seats. Just give me a moment here, writing eighty-seven down. And just as a reminder, like I do each evening, just want to let you know we have present in the House, we have the Select Board, school committee members, town council, town clerk, assistant town clerk, moderator's secretary, town accountant, chair and vice chairs of the finance committee, town manager, superintendent of schools. And of course, we have eighty-seven of you, the town meeting reps. We do appreciate you coming here each evening for town meeting and to do the town's business. I just want to remind you that procedural motions are still in effect and also a reminder that when you move the question, that means a cutoff debate, requires a two-thirds vote to pass, to actually cut off debate. And ninety-five percent of the time, I will always ask for a voice vote. If there's any doubt in the mind of the moderator, it will take a click or counts. We do have some articles that can be dismissed this evening. And if there's no objection, I now ask Select Board member Steve Cavey to make a motion to dismiss certain articles. Mr. Cavey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that we dismiss Articles fifty-two, fifty-three, sixty-five, and Article sixty-six.
Seconded, motion's made and seconded by John Inzavino, Precinct Four. I got to take a voice vote?
(Inaudible).
Sure, can we repeat that, Mr. Cavey?
Yes, sir. I move that we dismiss Articles fifty-two, Article fifty-three, Article sixty-five, and Article sixty-six.
And it was seconded by John Inzavino. Everybody hear those? All right, by voice vote, there was a second. Well, there's no reason needed. Let me ask the town council. There's no reason to... The answer is the proponent is not asking for any action on those articles, basically withdrawing those articles. So, no discussion needed, no debate needed. Unfortunately, no technical questions needed either, okay? As Selectman Mr. Crower suggested, right? All right, voice vote is moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you very much. That means four less articles to talk and discuss this evening. Is Mr. Lennyhan in the audience yet? Because he has one more motion, one more article we can dismiss. When he appears, we can take that action on that particular article. Okay. Now, since we dismissed Article fifty-two and we dismissed Article fifty-three, we are onto Article fifty-four on page forty-nine. Turn to page forty-nine if you will, I'll give you a moment or two. And now I ask for a motion from Mr. Vaughn Anokian, Finance Committee Chair. Vaughn?
That the town vote to appropriate $1,878,000 to undertake maintenance, extraordinary maintenance, improvements, repairs, upgrades, modifications, and the like to the town-owned water mains, including but not limited to replacement of existing water mains, new valves, fire hydrants, customer water services as applicable, professional engineering, architectural services, design, site preparation, demolition, installation, and all other incidental and related costs. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $1,878,000 and to issue bonds or notes therefore pursuant to Chapter forty-four and/or Chapter twenty-nine C of the general laws or any other enabling authority. And further, although these bonds and notes will be considered general obligations of the town, the debt service on these obligations is intended to be repaid by the Water Enterprise Fund.
Second. Okay, the motion's been moved and seconded. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to Town Meeting Article fifty-four.
Thank you. Can I have the Municipal Operations Committee report?
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Three. Municipal Operations voted five to zero to accept and recommend to Town Meeting Article fifty-four.
Thank you. All right, now we're ready for the presentation. Mr. McNulty, could you introduce yourself to the Town Meeting Representatives, please?
Phil McNulty, Water and Sewer Superintendent.
Go ahead, sir.
In combining a list of priority water mains from the Water Master Plan and also the pavement management plan, which was discussed last week on a Wednesday, I think it was, we've compiled a list of priority water mains for replacement. Replacing aged and tuberculated cast iron water mains, undersized mains, and asbestos mains will take priority. Stoughton currently has approximately 1.9 million available through the Clean Water Trust slash Drinking Water SRF program at zero percent interest loan as an option to finance this project. And this is also just a continuation of the water main project put forth last year. Available, take questions.
Thank you, Phil. All right, this is the time for technical questions. Are there any questions on this article? Mr. Starb, please introduce yourself, name and precinct number.
Yes, I have a technical question, it should take a second. Did you say polyethylene would be the material used on the water mains?
As in proposed pipe or existing?
This is something that doesn't leach into the water itself.
No, it'd be cast iron, ductile iron.
Cast iron was a problem. I mean, as far as rusting goes and it costs you more for cast iron than it would, something that doesn't break down for centuries.
Yeah, generally speaking, in almost every town around here, Eastern Mass and New England, cast iron water mains, we have a generation here that are about a hundred years old with the unlined, meaning no cement inside there, so those have a tendency to tuberculate over time.
Due to earth movements, what is used to connect one part of the pipe to another section? What material would you use to allow for expansion, contraction, movement of the earth, vibration from trucks?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Sure, go ahead.
So, the water mains are generally, not generally, they are five feet deep in New England. The frost line is four feet, so the pipe goes at five feet to eliminate the expansion, contraction potential that you're talking about.
So, as far as, is this going to be anywhere on the main drags where the heavy trucks will be going?
Last year's, yes, last year's is Prospect Street and this year's is mainly side streets.
Have you got a...
Excuse me, Mr. Starb, you asked several questions already. Thank you very much for your questions and your comments. All right, next up is George Stolinski.
George Stolinski, Precinct Two. Quick question, is there any help from the MWRA on this project?
They put forth the zero percent interest loans, yes.
Just zero percent. And what about the 1.9 million you said we had available already on this?
Yeah, each July first, they give the towns half a million dollars. Currently, we have 1.9 available.
And we're going to borrow at 1.8, right?
Well, I'm rounding off, it's 1.878.
All right, 1.9.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stolinski. Anyone else with technical questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on, prone con debate. Mr. Peter Murphy.
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. My previous position was project manager and one of the things we had to do was water pipes. And if you saw what's inside these water pipes after years and years, you shouldn't even hesitate about going forward with this article. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else prone con debate? Seeing none, last call, seeing none. Okay, let's move to vote. Are we ready? Please vote now. I'm reminded it's a borrowing article, we need the two-thirds for it to pass. Okay, we have the two-thirds, the Article fifty-four passes. Yes, eighty-nine, one no, zero abstentions. Declare that a vote. We're onto Article fifty-five. That appears midway on page fifty. It's Article fifty-five, Sewer Capital Inflow and Infiltration. Can I have a motion, Mr. Vaughn Anokian?
That the town vote to appropriate $400,000 to continue improving the sewer system and reduce infiltration and inflow of groundwater and water from other sources, including but not limited to investigation of sources of water loading from rain leaders or sump pumps, but not limited to as applicable professional engineering, architectural services, design, site preparation and demolition, installation, and all other incidental and related costs. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $400,000 and to issue bonds and notes therefore pursuant to Chapter forty-four and/or Chapter twenty-nine C of the general laws or any other enabling authority. And further, although these bonds and notes will be considered general obligations of the town, the debt service on these obligations is intended to be repaid by the Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Second. Okay, the motion's been moved and seconded by John Inzavino. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to Town Meeting Article fifty-five.
Thank you. Can I have Municipal Operations Committee report?
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Three. Municipal Operations voted five to zero to accept and recommend to Town Meeting Article fifty-five.
Thank you very much. And Mr. McNulty, please go ahead.
Phil McNulty, Water and Sewer Superintendent. So, this is an article that you've seen every year for the last, since I've been here eight years now. It's a, financially, it's a great program for us to hop on. The program is funded by MWRA Sewer at seventy-five percent grant and twenty-five percent on the town at zero percent interest loan, so that's the good news. In order to protect the substantial investment in sewer infrastructure, the town continues a proactive approach towards operating, maintaining ninety miles of gravity sewer. A comprehensive annual townwide investigation and rehab program continues to identify deficiencies in the sewer system, identifying inflow and infiltration sources, structural defects, evaluating rehab options, and designing construction on a continuous schedule year after year. As I stated, the financial program is very advantageous for us. Other intended benefits include that it forces us to maintain our system by virtue of having to camera the sewers and jet those, eliminating future clogs that might otherwise happen. Also, it minimizes flow reaching the MWRA sewer meters and as, from the sewer budget, we're carrying a $5.8 million line to cover that meter charge. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNulty. Next up is technical questions. Anybody for any questions? Jim Garren, please, when you rise to the microphone, please state your name, precinct number, and your questions, please.
Jim Garren, Precinct Six. Can we see in the MWRA assessments that we're having an effect with this I and I?
It's, it's not a cause and effect or a one-to-one type of thing, it's, there's a lot of variables, groundwater levels, rainfall, how we compare against other towns. In this past year, Cambridge and Boston have done a significant amount of work, which puts more burden on us to keep pace in our flow share. So, it's, the answer is not really.
So, we don't know whether we're getting a good bang for our buck on this one here?
Yeah, it's, I can say by avoiding doing this, especially with the financial benefits that the MWRA Sewer gives us to keep up, avoiding it would be, you see the results negatively.
I'll accept that, thank you. Okay, thank you. Next up is Chuck Collins, technical questions?
Chuck Collins, Precinct One. My question is, how are we going to investigate the source of water loading from rain leaders, sump pumps, and whatever? Is there any way that we can moderate that or find out what, where it's coming from?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, go ahead.
So, as I mentioned, this is a cyclical type of program. We do it year after year, same type of, we investigate, we prioritize, and then we put forth design and construction. From last year's article, we are approaching exactly what you said, to do smoke testing and try to find sump pumps. The other aspects are infiltration through cracked pipes and so forth. But to find sump pumps and roof leaders and catch basins that may be, i.e. clean water being introduced into the sewer, dirty water, affecting the flow and therefore the price that we pay, that's top priority.
I understand it, but how are we in the town going to find out who is having their dishwasher or sump pump going into the septic system or rain leaders going in?
Well...
How could...
That's through smoke testing for roof leaders. Each one has their own method to find them. Sump pumps are exactly the hardest ones because they're in people's houses and you have to get in the house in their basement. But we know there are a few out there and then the solutions are unique to each house, meaning if...
So, my question is, I mean, I'm sorry.
Is that your third question coming up?
No.
Okay. Sorry, I'm going to have to rule you out of order.
Again.
That's okay, no harm done. Pass your microphone off to Mr. Murphy.
Well, this is really affecting all the town members of the town because of the suburbs fees. That's all, bringing this up, okay? Because everything that goes into our water system from water to sewage affects our price that we have to pay every quarter. That's all, that's why I'm bringing that up, okay?
Thank you very much for your comments.
Sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Collins, thank you. Next up is Mr. Kirby.
Robert Kirby, Precinct Six. I have kind of a two-part question. It says in the motion to improve the sewer system, is there any chance that there's expansion of the sewer system or is it just strictly maintaining what's already in the infrastructure? There's no plan to expand the infrastructure, am I correct in that?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Exactly right, just to maintain what we have.
Okay, and the second part of the question is, it says at the end, the debt obligation is intended to be repaid by the Sewer Enterprise Fund. We have had historically some subsidy going from the general fund to this and those who are on septic, you know, have a little bit of umbrage in carrying this load. Is there any assurance that that intention is not going to somehow get overridden by a shortfall that then needs to draw from other funds? How is that going to absolutely be assured to be meeting its intention?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Also, the town accountant can assist in my answer, but I'll give a crack at it, is each year, in this case, it's, what is it, $400,000? The town accountant keeps a tab of that account for those, this year, last year, the year before, and utilizes those as the projects are formulated and bid on. So, you know, those borrowing, again, it's seventy-five percent paid from the MWRA, but we have to put the money up first and then they reimburse us, so that's the purpose of this. But that all stays within the Sewer Enterprise account.
Bill Rowe, would you like to add to that? Please identify yourself to the Town Meeting Reps, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. So, this is a very good program, but because we get a seventy-five percent grant, so for example, if Town Meeting authorizes $400,000 in borrowing, that allows the town, depending upon availability, to get up to 1.2 million in grants. So, but in order to participate in this program, Town Meeting has to authorize the borrowing, so we have to borrow a loan for ten years, zero interest, and then authorize a loan for ten years. And by doing that, you can get a million two in grants, depending upon what's availability, what's allocable by the MWRA. And we always use the grant money first before we borrow. We use the grant money first and then we'll go back to the oldest article and utilize that. And then if we have to borrow, you know, if we use it during the year, then we have to borrow by the end of the year.
So, there's really no...
But the sewer fund, yeah, I mean, the sewer fund should be paying the debt service on this, even though they're subsidized. I mean, the debt service should be recorded in the Enterprise Fund, that's why we have Enterprise Funds, that's legally where it should be paid from.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowe.
But we always use the grant money first, sorry, Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Rowe.
We always use the grant money first, so...
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, Mr. Murphy.
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. Through you, Mr. Moderator, probably to the town accountant, you almost answered my question. So, we borrow $400 and then the MWRA gives us seventy-five percent of that or seventy-five percent on top of that?
Seventy-five percent on top of that. So, if you had a million six project and we were going to use this article, we would go out and we'd borrow $400,000, then we'd get a million two in grants to fund the project, either the design or the construction.
Okay, so, we've been doing this for years and doing so, do you have any idea how much we've borrowed, say, in the past, say, five years?
Not off the top of my head, I can get you that number if you want.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Brown, you're next. Please identify yourself to the Town Meeting Reps.
Okay, Peter Brown, Precinct Three. This is something we've talked about for years and obviously support it, but I have a question, it's every ten years, the note seems to be, the borrowing. How many of these do we still have pending? For example, how many articles have we approved that are still out there and being paid by us until we recoup the money, the seventy-five percent of the grant that comes back to us? Can you answer that through you, Mr. Moderator, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Rowe.
So, currently, we have available to spend $2,685,000, $2,685. That's between grants and authorizations from Town Meeting to borrow.
All right, thank you. Anybody else with technical questions before we move on? Seeing none, let's go right to prone con. Is there...
Hi, Lisa Lyons.
Oh, yes, please go ahead, please identify yourself.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two. What are some of the procedures that we do to help reduce the infiltration?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Good question. So, we have our own jet truck. A jet truck is just a hose with a big jet on it that cleans the sewers, you know, to keep it real here. And basically, we do that so we have a nice clean pipe to look at so we can find cracks. Usually, we try to do it in the spring when the groundwater is highest, so if there is a crack, it actually shows, otherwise we're guessing. And then we send a camera down there on a nice, hopefully clean pipe. That's most of it. Then we do manhole inspections, the manholes that, you know, extend from one length of pipe to another and see if those are leaking. Those are the, I'll call it low hanging fruit, those are the easy ones to find. The more difficult ones, what the other gentleman said, is the sump pumps and roof leaders. And what we do is, we blow smoke into the sewer manhole and if it comes out somewhere, then we know there's an illicit connection.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNulty. Anybody else with technical questions? Mr. Bill Rowe.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, thank you, Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. I just wanted to point out, in case anybody hadn't seen it, there's a nice short presentation that our engineer did on page five forty-seven, so it's very informative, I just read it myself.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowe. Before we get into prone con debate, just want to remind everybody, this is a borrowing, so it's two-thirds majority needed. So, now we're moving into prone con debate. Anybody, prone con, comments? Okay, we're going to move right to the vote, are we ready? Okay, doing a quick calculation, the two-thirds, the motion passes, ninety-nine yes, two no, zero abstentions. Declare that a vote. Okay, we're going to move on to Article fifty-six. That appears on the top of page fifty-one, and that's Town Lake Management Program. And that's Mr. Jerry McDonald. Excuse me, let me have the motion first, because sometimes it happens, you know...
That the town vote to appropriate $50,000 for the continuation of the Town of Stoughton's townwide lake management program to include engineering, consulting, studies, and ongoing treatment to control exotic and invasive aquatic vegetation in our town lakes and ponds, including all incidental and related expenses, and that to meet this appropriation, $50,000 be transferred from free cash.
Second. Okay, the motion's made and seconded by John Inzavino. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to Town Meeting Article fifty-six.
Thank you. Can I have the Municipal Operations Committee report?
Municipal Operations voted four, zero, one, to accept and recommend to Town Meeting Article fifty-six. Mr. Haran abstained due to his membership on the Conservation Commission.
Thank you very much.
I know it says committee, but it's commission.
Commission. Thank you, Cynthia Walsh. All right, now can we have the presentation by Mr. Jerry McDonald? Please introduce yourself to the Town Meeting Reps, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jerry McDonald, Precinct Four, and Conservation Commission Chairman. This is our article that has appeared almost every year now for a number of years for control of weeds in the various town water bodies, ponds, et cetera. This program has been ongoing since about 2017, started with Ames Pond, expanded to Harris Pond, Dennison's Pond, Albert's Pond, and Woods Pond is on the agenda coming up. So, it's really townwide and we've gotten a great response from people in the town and the people that use it. And the money goes into the account and then the consultant that we have analyzes what each pond needs for each year. Some ponds don't get treated every year, they get, might skip... They might skip a year, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Okay, time for technical questions. Anybody have any questions? Denise, please state your name and precinct number and your questions.
Denise Bronston, precinct two. Through you, Mr. Moderator. To the speaker, does this include Ames Pond?
Did you say Ames Pond?
Yes.
Yes, that's where we started this program.
Excellent.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
Heather Kirby, precinct six. And as a newbie, just wanting some clarity around some of these maintenance things, why they're not just budgeted for?
Can we have it? If you know the answer to your-
I'll defer to the town engineer on that one.
Mr. Tisdale, please introduce yourself again.
Mark Tisdale, Director of Development Services, town engineer. That's a good question. It could be budgeted every year, but we would have to over-budget because the price varies from year to year slightly. Some years, I think you've seen a thirty-five thousand dollar article or a fifty thousand dollar article. It's somewhere in that range. We would probably have to put fifty or sixty in our budget every year to do it, because every year we look at the ponds, and every pond needs a separate treatment. Like the chairman of Conservation Commission just said, if they look at the ponds this year, which is usually after the springtime, and a pond doesn't need a treatment, then there's not a cost associated with it. Another way of looking at it is almost doing maybe a three-year article for pond management. The chair of the finance committee, we're gonna correct the lake management saying it's actually ponds, we have ponds in this town. So, the pond management program could be like a three-year article, and we just keep on pulling from it until the funds are diminished. That might be a better way to handle it in the future, instead of coming every year for, you know, fifty thousand dollars in estimate of what the cost's gonna be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the questions. Next up, Mr. Garen, go ahead.
Jim Garen, precinct six. I've been looking at these lake treatments for a long, long time, and I'm very pleased with some of the results. But I'd like to know, it appears that the circulation in the lakes, for whatever amount of treatment you put in there, does not clear all of the weeds, does not get in there. It seems to be by area. Can you tell me whether it is just by area close to the houses, or is it intended to cover the total volume of the water in the lake?
Yeah, I hope I can answer that. The treatment that's recommended by the consultant for the various lakes, the very pond, is done very scientifically, and the treatments get distributed into the whole water body that's accessible by a small boat. So if they can get to it in a small boat, they treat the whole area.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Terry.
Richard Terry, precinct eight. I have two questions. One is, you mentioned that Harris's Pond is being treated, and it's one of our water supplies. Is Muddy's being treated?
I'm sorry?
Is Muddy's Pond being treated?
I've not seen that on the list. That's controlled by the Water Department, I believe, and that's not on, I don't know, I don't think that's on the list just yet.
Okay. And also, the second question is, ponds like Old Albert's down on West Street and Britain's Pond, smaller ponds that are not used for swimming typically, are they potentially on that list as well?
Well, like, you know, what I call Dennison's Pond and Woods Pond, I don't believe anybody is using those for swimming. They're on the list to be treated. Some of these water bodies are interconnected, as you know, so you wanna make sure you're kinda treating the whole system. Does that help?
I bring up Old Albert's only because the depth of the water has been decreasing considerably to the point where there's less than a foot of water on the upstream side of Old Albert's. But thank you for your answers.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Mr. Starr, please identify.
Edward Starr, precinct six. There seems to be a duplicate on, there's two articles relative to ponds. One is article forty-four concerning Harris's Pond, and then there's another article fifty-six that covers the pond cleanup.
Mr. Starr, we're already done with article forty-four. So-
Yeah, but there's two articles.
It's not the exact duplication. They're not duplicated. But thank you. Is microphone zapping up here? All right, so, but thank you for that clarification. I'll have someone check it out for you right now. Could you check out forty-four for us while we prepare more technical questions? Pardon me? Okay, that was moving money from, okay, that was just moving money from those sources for the police locker upgrade. Okay, we are now still on article fifty-six, and we're still talking about technical questions. Anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to pro and con debate. I don't see anybody yet for pro and con debate.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. As previously spoken, this article started years ago, and it's a great article. And when it first started, I thought that fifty thousand wasn't enough because it cleared up a lot of lakes. Ames Pond has now become a better fishing spot, a better fishing, swimming spot, and I hope they continue this. It's a very good article. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Mr. John Rock.
Hi, everybody. John Rock, precinct three. And I guess I'm just echoing what the previous speaker said. I think it's a great program. In fact, I'd even like to see it expanded. Our ponds are like a gem in town, and there's a lot of them. And driving through town, even now, fairly early spring, I see some of them that I think may, well, not at my weight, but somebody could maybe walk across. So, I'd actually like to see this expanded in the future. It's just from a casual observer, it's, there's a lot of ponds that are already choked with vegetation. So, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for comments, pro and cons, pro and con debate? Seeing none, last call. I see none. All right, are we ready to vote? Please vote now. Article fifty-six, motion passes. One to one yes, one no, one abstention. Declare that a vote. We're moving on to article-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry, for your presentation. All right, now we're moving on to article fifty-seven, Town Hall Parking and Landscape Improvements. That appears at the middle or three-quarters down on page fifty-one. I'm gonna ask Mr. Von Anokian for the motion.
That the town vote to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars for professional consulting services to provide survey, civil engineering, landscape design, and other related consulting services with respect to parking, traffic, and landscape improvements at Town Hall, and that to meet this appropriation, seventy-five thousand dollars be transferred from free-
Okay, the motion has been made, and it has been seconded by John Inzavino. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted nine to one to accept and recommend to town meeting article fifty-seven.
Thank you very much. Now it's time for the presentation. Mark Tisdale, please introduce yourself again.
Mark Tisdale, Director of Development Services, town engineer. Good evening, everybody. Tonight is the article, article fifty-seven, Town Hall Parking and Landscape Improvements. The backup can be on page, on Book Two, page five sixty-nine, if you haven't seen it yet. In summary, this article essentially is seventy-five thousand dollars for only design services, not to build anything. It's only designed to improve the traffic circulation around Town Hall, add parking spaces. Our engineering department already has done a preliminary plan. We can add five more usable parking spaces as opposed to the horrible geometry in front of our Town Hall with the parallel parking spaces located on a curve which cannot be utilized if everybody wanted to park in those parking spaces. Along with this, since we're surveying the entire property, we are looking at landscape improvements to the front of Town Hall. It's really the focal point of our downtown. We have a nice, large, green area, as you're all aware, in the front, mostly consisting of grass. We are looking to put something like a pocket park in that area, similar to what the high school did. It's gonna, it could have benches, tables, low lighting, things of that nature. That'll come through the design process, just to, you know, spruce up Town Hall and improve traffic circulation in the area.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tisdale. Okay, this is the time for technical questions. Anybody have any questions, please? All right, I see none. Moving on, pro and con debate. George and Pat. Mr. Dolinsky.
Question, George Dolinsky-
You have a question?
Yes, precinct two.
I didn't see you raise your hand.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll let you slide.
Trying to handle two books at the same time. Very difficult, especially for somebody my age. The question I had, there seems to be an abandoned house right next to Town Hall. Is there any chance of us taking that land or buying that piece of property and expanding our parking to that area?
Couldn't anybody answer that for him? I'll let him have that question.
This article is only to do with the Town Hall properties for design of parking circulation and do with that. That's a separate question. I'm not sure if that's in order.
All right, no, that's fine. Sorry, Mr. Dolinsky.
Sorry for what? Gotta ask the question, and you can't give me an answer?
It's not in the article, so this is just around the property directly around, involving the parking and the landscape improvements.
Right, but there's an obvious piece, you're right next door. Should I wait for technical, open debate on this, or what?
Right now, all I can say is, out of order. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Pat, did you have a question, or are we in pro and con debate? Sure, go right ahead, please. It's not working.
Pat Colburn, precinct four. This is just a comment for what it's worth. I love our buildings, I love our new projects, but we landscape the heck out of them, and I don't think they look that good. We stuff as many plants as we possibly can. We buy thirty of the same shrub and march it in a straight little line. And it would just be nice if we could start to think about more natural-looking landscaping, more native plantings for the bees, the birds, et cetera. And it might cost us a little less money if we're not just stuffing it so full that it's overgrown. And we don't have a gardener. We certainly can't expect the DPW to go out there and deadhead and thin things out. But it's just something, it would be nice if we could start, maybe make a bit of a move towards where gardening is heading now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for pro and con debate or comments? Mr. Rock, please rise, state your name, precinct number, and your comments.
Hi, John Rock, precinct three. I'm usually very supportive of articles. I'm not sure about this one. Seventy-five thousand dollars seems a lot of money to spend for a study and design of the landscape and parking spaces at Town Hall, which is a gem of a building. Isn't that something that could be possibly done in-house?
No questions at this time, just comments.
Okay, I think it's something that maybe could be done in-house.
Thank you very much. Are you an English teacher, by the way? Okay, there you go. All right, anybody else for pro and con debate or comments? Nope, seeing none. Are we ready to vote? It's a simple majority. Please vote now. It's simple majority, it's seventy-five thousand being transferred from free cash. All right, article fifty-seven, motion passes. Sixty-four yes, thirty-seven no, one abstentions. I declare that a vote. And we're gonna move on to article fifty-eight. That appears on the top of page fifty-two. And fifty-eight is for landscape improvements at the Lucius Clapp property. That's on page fifty-two. Can I have the motion, please, Mr. Von Anokian?
That the town vote to appropriate seven thousand dollars for professional consulting services to provide survey, civil engineering-
Hang on a second, Vaughn, we're having some problems. Will we switch up the microphone? Thank you, sir.
That the town vote to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars for professional consulting services to provide survey, civil engineering, landscape design, and other related consulting services with respect to parking, traffic, and landscape improvements at Lucius Clapp property, that to meet this appropriation, seventy-five thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded by John Inzavino. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted nine to one to accept and recommend to town meeting article fifty-eight.
Thank you very much. And for the presentation, we have Mr. Tisdale. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mark Tisdale, Director of Development Services, Town Engineer. This is article fifty-eight for landscape improvements to the Lucius Clapp Building Property. Design only, no construction costs. The cost is seventy-five thousand dollars. Just like in the previous article, anything done in the downtown is sort of a very important aspect of everybody. You know, everybody focuses on the downtown. We've, I've built in buffer into these articles because I know they're gonna be looked at very heavily by the select board, by everybody. We want it heavily looked at by everybody. We want it vetted properly, so everybody's proud of the project when it's completed. So, you can get a quote from an engineer for a certain, for a certain project, but that doesn't account for the particular process you gotta go through for the town. I'm expecting many revisions, many different public hearings. So that's all accounted for in these projects. Our engineering department, I wish we had the staff to complete these projects. A lot of these things, these kind of landscape projects have to be done by landscape architects. We are not landscape architects in Town Hall. I wish I was. You know, I usually, my extent of landscaping when I was in the private sector for civil engineering is just making sure I'm taking the symbol and plopping it on the plan to meet the number required by the town, not caring about the species because I don't know what species is gonna survive, because that's not my expertise. So we usually hire landscape architects with that expertise. And that's what this town deserves for these two properties being located in the downtown. You want a nice, solid project. The, this particular project, property will be the same as the landscape portion of Town Hall. We'll look at the area, it's the green area on front of the Lucius Clapp Building. It's on the other side of downtown. There'll be things like benches looked at, signage, landscaping, walking paths within that front area. This came about through the select board process when we had the previous article in front of them. This article came forward because they really liked addressing the goals of the master plan that we all worked hard at, which is, you know, enhancing the green areas in our downtown, not just having grass, but having usable areas people can go into with seats, benches, tables, and just to enjoy the area. Right now, that's just really grass. So that's kind of the goal of what this article accomplishes and part of the other article. Again, there's no construction. These are design, only fees.
Okay, you all set? Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Okay, time for technical questions. Mr. Scardino, please identify yourself to the town meeting reps.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Joe Scardino, precinct one. Through you to the Director of Development Services. Why wasn't this article put through the CPC?
It's a good question, Mrs. Scardino. I think technically what our approach with these kind of articles are, is to get the design complete. In the past, a lot of times, we don't get the design complete, and we go, we roll the design in with construction. I like to get the design complete, come to the CPC. That would be the intent. The next step would be to go to the CPC with a fully-designed set of plans and cost estimate of what it's going to be, so they know exactly what that construction- going to be, so they know exactly what, what that, that construction article's gonna entail. They go in front of them right now with design costs without having an idea of what the construction costs are, I, I think it's just not fair to the CPC.
Okay, thank you. You all set, Mr. Scardino?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coleman?
Eric Coleman, precinct five. I'm looking at the book two, page five-seventy-nine, and, which is the existing conditions aerial view, and the five-eighty-two is the proposed conditions, and the only difference I see is the wording of existing lawn and landscape, landscaping upgrades. I don't see anything for parking in there. Am I missing something?
No, you are not missing anything. The intent of the proposed conditions is to show you the exact area we're looking at to enhance. So you'll see that there's a hatched area that defines that area. Again, that's the point of this article, is to come up with a design, because we don't have one just yet.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Still in technical question stage. Anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to pro and con debate. This is Cynthia Walsh, please go ahead.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. This is lipstick on a pig. Until we can make that building handicapped accessible, I don't care how many flowers you put in front of it. Vote no.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else pro and con debate? Yes, go ahead, please identify yourself.
Jess Minor, precinct five, member of the finance committee. I'm also against this one, in large part because we spent the majority of town meeting hearing about massive deficits that we have related to water and sewer and all sorts of other things. We just voted up the work at the Town Hall. Seventy-five thousand may not seem like a lot from free cash, but we're not really putting it into stabilization funds or anything of this sort. I just think we have to, at some point, get a little bit more serious about prioritizing projects, and there's still lots of holes in the middle of downtown, there's many empty storefronts. I walk past Lucius Clapp all the time, and I always find it pleasant. So, to me, that's one of the places that's still reasonably nice at this point, when there's a lot of other things right nearby that aren't. I'd rather we not put the money to this right now, and maybe in a few years, when we turn around some of our other problems, we bring this back up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other, any other pro con comments? Anybody else before we move on? Seeing none, we're ready to vote? Please vote now, this is simple majority. Eighteen yes, eighty-five no, one abstention. Okay, we're gonna move on. Article fifty-nine, right in the middle of the page, on page fifty-two. Article fifty-nine, just looking for the motion. The motion appears on page fifty-four. Can I have the motion, Mr. Anokian? Vaughn Anokian, please.
That the town vote to appropriate one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the purposes as described in the warrant, and that to meet this appropriation, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. The motion has been made, and it's been seconded by John Azavino. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article fifty-nine.
Thank you. Can I have the Intergovernmental Relations Committee report by Deputy Moderator Kamel Drews?
Intergovernmental Relations voted five-zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article fifty-nine.
Thank you. Can I have the Municipal Operations Committee report?
Municipal Operations voted five to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article fifty-nine.
And now we're gonna hear from the Municipal Regulations Committee report from Kamel Drews.
Municipal Regulations voted five-zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article fifty-nine.
Okay, thank you all for those committee reports. Now it's time for the presentation. Mark Tisdale, thank you.
Thank you. This is not a landscape article.
You wanna go to vote on it right now?
Yeah, right, there we go. Might as well. All right. This is probably about the fourth or fifth time I've been in front of this body for an article to do with this intersection improvement project. Believe me, it's been a learning experience, a lot of moving pieces with this. As you know, this is the intersection of Tosker Drive, Central, and Canton Street. There's a park there. Long story short, in order to change the geometric, geometry of a park, you know, you have to go through the act of legislation to do that. We've done that. We're at the point where that's all set. This article allows the select board to actually alter the layouts of all those roads. If you can imagine it with an intersection project like this, you've got little slivers of the road that actually change, that you've got easements along the road, things of that nature. The plan has not changed in a long time, since even the last time this body has seen it, but this gives the select board the legal authority to actually alter the layouts of the road. Part of the road is also a sidewalk in the park. This actually lays out the sidewalk in the park, as, as required by Mass DOT. This project is handled by Mass DOT totally. They're actually dealing with the construction part, it was the town, the town's responsibility to actually come up with the design, which is pretty much complete now. The Mass DOT will run with construction. The construction's estimated at about five-point-two million dollars right now, so, you know, thank you, you should be proud of, of your previous votes for design costs and things of that nature, because I think around for about a half a million, six-hundred thousand in costs associated with this, this article, you've gotten above five-point-two million dollars. So I appreciate the support for that, and you should be proud of this when, when it's complete. The costs associated with this will go towards the damages that get paid to everybody, they call it damages, but essentially if there's an easement on your property, like a temporary easement during construction, that, you know, water damages. So everybody abutting this project gets paid a certain amount of money based on appraisal, just like the other project that we had, the Safe Roots to School project, follow the same exact process. So these costs go along with that. They will also pay for the appraisals, and they will also pay for some attorney fees involved with that work.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale, for your presentation. Okay, now we move into the technical question segment. Mr. Murphy, you're up.
Thank you. Peter Murphy, precinct two. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Town Engineer. So far, do you have any idea how much the town has spent on this project?
Yep. So all the combined articles are probably around the five, six-hundred thousand dollar range, don't quote me on that.
Okay.
Yep.
Ballpark. That's five-hundred thousand. And the other question is, once the shovel gets put in the ground, how long do you anticipate for completion?
DOT is saying eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
The project is set to be bid this September, so that, if this article gets passed, it's set to be bid this September.
So it'll be bid in September, so it probably won't bring around till the springtime.
Spring, summertime, yep.
So it won't be like the, the middle school there, with the, the other project that you're going down on Central Street going on for years.
Yeah. I'm told that will be complete this year, but again, that's a DOT project, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you both. Okay, next up is Joy Rosenblatt.
Jana.
Jana?
Yeah, precinct, precinct seven.
Sorry for the mispronunciation.
All right, okay. Given that it is flipping awful to get out of Island Street onto Central.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you move your microphone down a little bit? Paul, take it out.
Given that it is so horrible to get out of Island Street onto Central and Canton, I don't see that being addressed in this, and I was wondering if you could explain how that's gonna be affected, please.
Yeah, that's, that's a fantastic question. Thank you for asking that question. I've had that question asked a lot, actually, over the course of this project. And actually, the way it works is, is, obviously you're familiar with the area coming out of Island Street, so you have the signal at West Street right now. So people coming out of Island Street, cars are just kinda flying by, and it's, they're going at a pretty good speed. So it's very hard to get out of Island Street, you're looking for that gap, right, between cars. So by actually having a signal between, up, you know, you have one at Tosker and one at West, these two signals will be coordinated, they'll work together. So when, when there's red lights, they'll actually form gaps, you'll actually have gaps coming through, they'll make it easier for people exiting Island Street. There'll be defined gaps, because now you have a signal on each side of Island Street.
Well, they said that was gonna be the case when the first one was, the first traffic light was put in, and it hasn't eased the problem at all, so could you please explain how you feel that this is gonna change things? Because I don't see it.
I think I just explained how that, this will change it, because, because now you have two signals as actual, an added benefit, because you can coordinate both signals and actually control the gap moving. The other one is tough, because you only have one signal, you can't control a gap with one signal. With two, you can.
I hope so.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Mr. Terry.
Richard Terry, precinct eight. I live on Canton Street. I live four-hundred-and-fifty feet from the intersection, and I guess my question is, how dangerous is this intersection compared to the other dangerous intersections in town like School and Pearl?
Yeah, so that, in my, this is my opinion, it's probably the second most dangerous intersection, Canton and School Street probably being the first most dangerous intersection. In the past years, we've, we've fixed other dangerous intersections also. All intersections, from a safety standpoint, if they're above the state average for crashes per million, they're considered unsafe. You know, they, they're above the average, let's put it that way. This is above that average for crashes per million vehicles. If you've all traveled through it, you're pretty aware that's a very confusing intersection. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Becca Moxton. Please go ahead.
Becca Moxton, precinct seven. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mark Tisdale. Can you just remind us, the right, so going up the hill and then making the right onto Canton Street with the new redesign, is that a continuous green light right, or is that going to be signalized with a, with a stop? Otherwise for walkers, but like for anything else, or is it a continuous through?
That will be signalized. If there's a button pushed, there'll be a red.
But otherwise it'll...
There'll be a through, exactly.
Okay, similar to the, in front of Olivos, where it's just a...
Yeah, so there's, there's actually a dedicated lane for vehicles taking that right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garren, you're next.
Jim Garren, precinct six. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Will the pedestrian light at West Street not affect this coordination of these lights?
The, the, the whole signal network will be coordinated, so when there's a red light at one intersection, it'll be coordinated with the other intersection. So if a pedestrian signal's pushed, it will be coordinated, because a red light will be actuated.
So, so both, both lights will be, will be red at, at the same time?
They, they, no, it's, there's usually a delay involved with it, because if they both go on it red at the same time, it doesn't really work, because the car is moving through, there's usually a one or two-second delay, kinda like if you look at the square, the north and south signals, there's a little delay, because that, if this one turns green, this one's red, then this one turns green about a couple seconds later, so the, the traffic flow just keeps on moving.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dolinsky?
George Dolinsky, precinct two, once again. Looking at the schematic on page, whatever number it is in the book two, the, there's a traffic light that looks like it's on Tosker Drive intersection. There is a light existing over by West Street, and when you're heading east on Central, you're going up an incline. And if I remember correctly, one of our selectmen who's in the traffic business said it was gonna be difficult for trucks to stop on a hill, eighteen-wheelers, whatever. How is this gonna affect that type of traffic, when you've got eighteen-wheelers coming up a hill, having to stop at these intersections? Can you explain that, please?
Yeah, the, the grades of this intersection meet the requirements, requirements of Mass DOT. Once again, all this is reviewed and approved by, by Mass DOT, it has to meet their strict requirements, and the grade and slope of that road meets their requirements.
So we should have no problems with eighteen-wheelers starting and stopping on a hill?
As long as we, as long as we maintain the roads properly, we salt them and de-ice them, everything should be fine.
I hope so. Thank you.
Okay, any, any more for technical questions? We're still in that segment of the questioning, none? Okay, let's move right into pro and con debate. Anybody? Eric Coleman, then followed by Becca.
Eric Coleman, precinct five. I urge town meeting members to look at page five-ninety, which is the proposed improvements, and that's in the second book, and it really looks good. This is a part of town, an intersection that I try to avoid no matter what, and this is really gonna be good. I favor this article.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Becca Moxton, you're up next.
Becca Moxton, precinct seven. I live off of Island Street. I've been following this project very closely, and I am one-hundred percent in favor, and I understand there are still some struggles, but I believe that the positives outweigh them, so I urge everyone to vote yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Terry?
Richard Terry, precinct eight. Five-eighty-two Canton Street, six houses away from this intersection. I've lived there for thirty-one years. My property has been hit three times by cars coming up the hill towards Stoughton Center. Luckily, I have three, four granite flower pots that have protected my house. I urge you, all of you, to vote yes. Just last week, in a clear, clear day, we had head-on collision. No rain, no fog, no snow, head-on collision. So please vote yes.
Okay, anybody else for pro and con debate, comments? Seeing none. Okay, let's move to the vote. Are we ready? Please vote now. Okay. Article fifty-nine passes. One hundred yes, four no, zero abstentions. All right, let's move on. That was Article fifty-nine. I'd like to, John, Mr. Lenehan, can I take a motion from you, for a motion to dismiss? On a, no, not this one, but I want you to come on up and, this will be on Article sixty-nine, just to, so everybody will know that it will be dismissed. We're just moving ahead as fast as we can this evening. So I recognize John Lenehan for motion on Article sixty-nine, if he had no objection. John?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Lenehan, precinct one, member of the Community Preservation Committee, and I'd like to make a motion, we dismiss Article sixty-nine. We have actually covered it already in the budget, and it was sort of a backup motion in case there were any challenges with the budget. We wanted to bring the most savings to the people of the town, so it's already been covered.
Thank you, Mr. Lenehan. Seconded, motion has been made to dismiss, seconded by Mr. John Azavino. Can I take on a voice vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, Article sixty-nine is now dismissed. All right, now we're gonna move on. Article sixty, that appears on page fifty-four, that's the Pine Street and Pleasant Street Intersection Improvements Design. Can I have a motion, sir, from, please, from Mr. Vaughn Anokian?
That the town vote to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars for professional consulting services to provide survey, civil engineering, landscape design, and other related consulting services with respect to traffic improvements at the Pine Street and Pleasant Street intersection, and that to meet this appropriation, seventy-five thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Okay, the motions has been made and is seconded by John Azavino. Can I have the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article sixty.
Okay, time is now for the presentation. Mr. Tisdale, I believe? Okay, time is now for the presentation. Mr. Tisdale, I believe? This is Article sixty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Tisdale, Town Engineer, Director of Development Services. Uh, this is the design of intersection improvements at the Pine Street and Pleasant Street intersection. Uh, the cost is seventy-five thousand dollars. The backup to this article is on Book Two, page five ninety-five. I wrote up a pretty good summary on this in, in the backup information. If you've all been to this, this intersection, it's right located abutting the Cape and Reynolds property. Uh, we had an article on that earlier in town meeting. Uh, this article, this, this intersection is very confusing. It must be a, a period of time where there must, I don't know, a certain town engineer or DPW director, I don't know. But we have these odd intersections with, with, um, you know, these, these hatched triangles in the middle of them with two ways to enter the intersection, and they're just very confusing. They're very wide. Um, I, I know the problem. I have a hard time understanding which lane, you know, to take when I'm driving to that intersection, especially going up Pine Street. Uh, what we're trying to do is, is eliminate the confusion. I think this is the, the worst of them all. There's obviously the highest volume of traffic on Pleasant Street. Um, and Pine Street's obviously an important road. Uh, what we're going to do is just make this a standard T-type intersection, just a T-intersection. Uh, it's not signalized, it's not needed, it doesn't meet the traffic, uh, volume warrants for, for Pine Street. It's just to make the intersection more usable, easy to use, and, and functional. Uh, other improved benefits that will occur will be actually the crosswalk distance. Uh, there is not a sidewalk currently on Pleasant Street, uh, but there are obviously long-term plans to, to, uh, look at that. Uh, the board of selectmen have prioritized that as one of the roadway corridors they want to look at. We have Old Colony Planning Council onboard to actually do a study on that area. Although, with that being said, pedestrians do walk that road, and they do cross that intersection, unfortunately. Uh, and that intersection's very wide. By making a T-type intersection, we're narrowing down the pavement to just pretty much two lanes instead of the, the four spaced-out lanes. And it'll make it safer for pedestrians to cross that intersection, since there'll be less travel length. Essentially, that's what we're doing. Uh, be honored to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Okay, time for technical questions. Mr. Rock?
John Rock, Precinct Three. I apologize for being up here so much. Um, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Tisdale. Is a light planned for that intersection? Is a light planned for that intersection? That's another one of our intersections from hell, so I'm-
Yeah, there is no sign, signal proposed at this point in time, although we are going to design the intersection with this article. Um, it doesn't meet the, the warrant, the traffic wa, volumes to become a signalized intersection. Currently, we know that.
Are, are there a lot of accidents there?
There's a decent amount of accidents, yeah.
A decent amount?
I don't know. I'm not going to tell you the number, because I don't know off the top of my head. We have to check with the police.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up is Mr. Fox. Juan Fox.
Juan Fox, Precinct One. Um, looking at the proposed design, uh, why was a, a right-turn lane, uh, for Pine Street, uh, left off that design? It shows just one lane for both left and right turn, and Pleasant Street being a very busy street, it would be difficult, uh, to move traffic, uh, through there.
Uh, that's a great question. So remember, the, the article is for a design. Um, this is, this plan was drawn up through our GIS system. Uh, it's a, it's labeled conceptual design, because it's very preliminary. When we go through the design process, if, if a right-turn lane is warranted, we will definitely add one.
You all set, Mr. Fox? Okay, thank you. Becca, were you up? I don't see you. You're all set, thank you very much. Greg Pocracker, I mispronounced your name, Greg.
That's okay.
Tell me how to pronounce it one more time.
Greg Pocracker, Precinct Two.
Thank you, Greg.
Uh, through you, Mr. Moderator. As we continue, Mark, to improve our intersections in adding potential traffic lights at these intersections, uh, who in the town oversees the syncing of those lights, whether it's in the center of town, whether it's the new Tosker Drive intersection, whether it's up by Target or wherever? Who, who in the town coordinates that? Is it Mass DOT? Is it someone, is it a town employee? Is it the DPW? Who, who coordinates that?
That's a good question, Greg. I appreciate that. Um, if it's a, if it's a state highway, DOT controls it. Uh, they are the only ones allowed to go into the box and adjust the timing. Um, for any town roads, uh, either myself or Paul Jafum, we typically work together. Usually the phone call comes to one of us, and then we, we get it done. So between Paul and myself, we, we go in there and we take a look at it. We typically have to call our consultants. They, they're the ones certified to go in the box and check, see if the timing, uh, is not correct. A few years ago, um, one of my first articles at town meeting, which I, I did a long PowerPoint, and, and just, just, everybody was hammering me with questions, uh, when I was a young, young engineer here. Uh, we prepared all, um, detailed analysis on every signalized intersection, came up with a plan of what this, what optimized every light, and we actually hung it in the box in each one of these intersections. So we have those records. Um, obviously, traffic volumes could have changed a little bit. We could, we could update those. But generally, we, we know what it's supposed to be to optimize the timing, and if something's off, we just go reference that plan. We look at it. We can see what's happening. If something's changed, we can modify it.
Thank you, because I, I do believe that each intersection is only as good as that synchronized timing is, because as traffic changes, uh, we need to keep on top of that.
Greg, is there a question? Is there a question there?
Uh, no, that's all for my questions. Thank you.
You can come back for pro and con debate.
Thank you.
And comments. Thank you. Anybody else for a technical question? Mr. Lanning, please go ahead.
John Lanning, Precinct One. Uh, can I suggest you also look at a, a right-horn, a right-hand turn lane on Pleasant Street as you're turning in, just because everybody's roaring up behind you so fast? I use that intersection frequently, and, yeah, a little scary in that way.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead and identify yourself.
Hi, Rose Eckler, from Precinct One. Um, through you, Mr. Moderator. On, um, the proposed conditions, the black, the black area, is that part of the plan? Or is it like a sidewalk? Is it?
Okay, so I'm assuming the black area on your plan since the photocopy is the green area on my plan.
Oh, okay.
We're not putting a tree there. It's just grass, all right?
Okay.
So, um, the reason why you have that large area is because that's all currently pavement. And by actually making a, a T-intersection, again, it's a conceptual plan. If we add a lane in, that area will be a little less. But generally, you're going to reduce pavement in that area.
Okay, because I don't, oh, I, I, can I, this, um, Southeastern Regional, it does a bus stop there.
Yep.
So, okay. Um, and the other question that I had is, is, will the road, will Pine Street still be no trucks? During certain hours or whatever? That's not going to-
This doesn't account for like a truck exclusion or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for technical questions? Mr. Belvo, please identify yourself, please.
Paul Belivo, Precinct Three. I'm assuming that the, uh, your green area, would that be, uh, incorporated with the Cape and, Cape and Reynolds, uh, and they'd be in charge of taking care of that area, et cetera?
Yeah, exactly, Paul. That's a, that's a fantastic question. This work will blend in seamlessly with the work that's going to be going on with Cape and Reynolds. We expect that work to actually be done first. So even where the granite curbing is, uh, from their parking lot coming into the street, we'll blend this project in perfectly with that.
And, and on the other side, is that, uh, accumulated property for, uh, whoever owns that property, or?
I, I don't know. I didn't understand your question, Paul.
The other, the other side of the street, the intersection, there's a, there's a green area there that will be, um, you'll be gaining more green space there. Who, who, uh, owns that piece of land right there?
That's actually within our right-of-way, so we own it.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Karen Clip. Did you have a question? Then Peter.
We just approved to put parking spaces-
Could you just identify yourself for the time being?
Karen Clip, Precinct Eight. We just approved the other night, uh, this project for the dog park in the garden, and we could be putting parking. Are we taking land away when we do this? It's not going to affect that project at all?
No, that's, that's also a good question. Thank you. Uh, no, this, this is not touching the parking spaces. This, this project will actually blend right up to the limit of work of that other project.
Thank you. Mr. Bennis?
Peter Bennis, Precinct Two. Uh, my question is a follow-up for Karen's. Is this potentially going to allow more parking for the dog park and for Cape and Reynolds? Is there any potential for that?
Um, it's not planned in this particular design, but as you can see, there's a large amount of area that will be taken away from the, from the roadway, so potentially-
Right, because the only reason I asked that question, when we were discussing the number of parking spots at Cape and Reynolds, the dog park, and for the people that go there, this, again, may be a potential, uh, way to get more spaces.
Potentially, yep.
Okay, thank you. We're still in the- Any, any other questions? We're good? Okay, technical questions section. Anybody else? Janice Schneider, please come forward and identify yourself, please.
Janice Schneider, Precinct Six. One quick question. When we put together the Tosker Drive-
Excuse me, Janice, you gotta get a little closer to the microphone.
Okay, how's that?
Excellent.
Um, when you put together the Tosker Drive intersection, there were public hearings. Just from hearing tonight, all the questions, will there be a similar set of public hearings for that particular intersection, given that it also has the dog park?
Yes, there will be definitely public meetings and hearings, a, a lot of them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none? We're going to move right into pro and con debate or comments. Anybody? Seeing none? Up. Greg, go ahead. Please identify yourself again.
Greg Pocracker, Precinct Two. I'm really happy that we are looking at these intersections, Mark. Uh, again, the, the safety, the traffic flow, uh, just, again, my concerns are staying on top of the synchronizing of these lights, like the Target lights that we all know and love, and eventually the Tosker lights that we'll grow to know and love. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for pro and con debate comments? Seeing none? All right, we're going to move right to the vote. All those in favor, excuse me, uh, it's getting tongue-tied here tonight. Are we ready? Okay, please vote now.
Thank you.
Okay, Art, Article sixty. The motion passes. Ninety-two yes, twelve no, one abstention. All right, we're going to move right on to Article sixty-one. Acceptance of Kelsey Drive Sewer Pump Station is public. That's on the bottom of page fifty-four. And Mr. McNulty, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, how about the motion? Juan, you didn't remind me.
That the town vote to accept the sewer pump station and the land thereon as set forth in the twenty-fifteen definitive subdivision approval decision and shown on the plans entitled Sewer Pump Station and Infrastructure Plan for the Villages at Guarded Highlands in Stoughton, Massachusetts, dated February thirteen, twenty-fifteen, last revision four-six, twenty-sixteen, prepared by Outback Engineering Sheets one through eleven, and further to authorize the Select Board on such terms and conditions as the Board deems appropriate to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain said sewer pump station and the li, land thereon, and including any access drainage and utility easements depicted on said plan, and any other such temporary or permanent easements as may be needed to operate and maintain the sewer pump station.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and has been seconded by John Anzavino. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article sixty-one.
Thank you. Can we have the Municipal Operations Committee report?
They took away my microphone. No, we open to you. We can check.
I think one's being handed to you right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Municipal Operations voted five to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article sixty-one.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Mr. McNulty, your presentation, please.
Phil McNulty, Water and Sewer. Over the last ten years or so, there's been three distinct phases of Guarded Highlands residential units that's been constructed, uh, has now fully built out, which included construction of a new sewer pump station as, as part of Phases Two and Three. Per the original agreement, the Homeowners Association is now requesting the town to take ownership and operation of the sewer pump station. After several site inspections, punch lists, monitoring performance for a few months on our SCADA system, and performing pump drawdown tests, we are now satisfied that the station is in good working order and ready to be accepted.
You all set, Mr. McNulty? All set?
All set, yeah.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, now we're in the period of technical questions. Any questions, please? Mr. Lanning, followed by Matt.
John Lanning, Precinct One. Can we remove the words "purchase" or "eminent domain"?
A little closer to the microphone, John.
Can't get much closer. Uh, can we remove the words "purchase" or "eminent domain"? We shouldn't be paying for this.
Uh, it's, it's not a purchase. It's a, just a, there's no money value associated with it, I would hope.
You have another question, Mr. Lanning? Are you all set?
Matthew Callis, Precinct Three.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt.
Is this a, a sewer pump we've previously agreed to take?
I think it's part of the original, um, stipulation of acceptance of the, uh, it's not a subdivision. It's actually a condo complex. If you drive into it, it looks like a regular residential, uh, roadways, but it's a condo. And, uh, as part of the original agreement, it was, it was always planned for the town to take over the sewer pump station. There's, there's also about twelve or fourteen existing, previously existing houses that are connected to the station, so we have that responsibility to those customers as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, you're up next.
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. Uh, when this station came about, did they pay for buy-in to the sewer line as one fee, or do they pay for each individual unit? When, when you hook up the sewer, you have to pay a fee, correct?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Do you know? It, it was like twenty years ago, so I wasn't here, so I don't know.
Okay, so-
You have another question?
Well, I was-
Oh, well, he doesn't, you, you have an answer, Mr. McNulty?
Yes, it's, they were, um, the common, I think it's a state requirement, Mark, is that correct? There's a four-to-one ratio to reduce INI four to one, so I think at that time they had to do that. Is that correct?
Yeah, uh, every, every house built in that subdivision has to apply for a sewer connection permit. We charge them the sewer connection fees and all the INI, INI fees associated with that.
So, we're at the condo association. Are we responsible from the pumping station to, to the houses as far as maintaining those sewer lines, or is it stop at the pumping station?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. It stops at the pump station. Uh, uh, that goes for everything, all the infrastructure up there, plowing, trash collection, uh, water and sewer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Linda Rinaldi. Please identify yourself, please.
Linda Rinaldi, Precinct Five. Do we anticipate any future financial obligation to this, um, pump station? Like, who maintains it?
Yeah, so, uh, through you, Mr. Moderator. Um, so we've kind of made ourselves comfortable that we're taking over a product that's in good working order, so-
Okay.
We don't anticipate any major, uh, you know, costs associated for at least twenty, twenty-five years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Eric Coleman.
Eric Coleman, Precinct Five. Along, along those lines, estimated cost zero, but there may be, who, who would take care of any problem currently if there's a problem- Who, who would take care of any problem currently if there's a problem with, with this pumping station?
Yes, so it's not a done deal. We have, still have to record the easements and so forth. Uh, but once that's done, once the Board of Selectmen signs that, then we would take it over. The Sewer Department would.
That's not my question. As it stands now, before this article is, is voted on, if there's a problem with it, who pays for fixing the pumping station?
The Homeowners Association has an existing contractor on board to, uh...
So, we would be taking on this responsibility, and there may be some kind of cost?
Correct, yeah. There'll be absolutely time, you know, daily visits and so forth. And any, same as we do with our other twelve pump stations, maintain them on a day-to-day basis.
And we don't know what that cost might be?
Well, this should be zero for quite a while, is what I'm saying. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for technical questions? All right, seeing none. We're gonna move into pro and con debate or comments. Anybody for pro and con debate or comments? Seeing none. Uh, this is a two-thirds majority required because I believe eminent domain's involved. Okay, two-thirds. I'm sorry, did you want to just explain that, Town Council? Yes, I would. We're gonna have just a comment. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, you had asked, um, if this required a two-thirds and why? And it requires a two-thirds because eminent domain is included and acquisition of real property.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's two-thirds requirement. Okay, we ready to vote? Please vote now. Okay, motion passes. Eighty-nine yes, thirteen no, three abstentions. I believe that's a two-thirds. Anybody wanna check my math? Okay, we're good. All right, we're gonna move on to Article sixty-two, electronic permitting software.
That the town vote to appropriate four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to purchase electronic permitting software and for consulting services to assist the town with implementation of this software and all necessary hardware, software, training, and fees. That to meet this appropriation, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars be transferred from free cash.
Second. Okay, the motion has been made and seconded by John Anzavino. I need a Finance Committee report, please.
Finance Committee voted ten to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article sixty-two.
Thank you. Municipal Operations Committee report.
Municipal Operations voted five to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article sixty-two.
All right, thank you. Now it's time for the presentation, Mr. Mark Tisdale.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Tisdale, Director of Development Services, Town Engineer. This is Article sixty-two, Electronic Permitting. Uh, the backup for this information's in Book Two, page six-oh-seven. As previously mentioned, the cost of the article's four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. This is for the software for electronic permitting. Uh, what, what is electronic permitting? Uh, that's a, probably a question some people are asking. Uh, I'm hoping not too many people, but some people may be asking what electronic permitting is. And essentially, it's a computer-based way of doing permitting. Currently, everything's handled through paper. Everything's filled up, filled out with paper. You submit it into our departments for permits, uh, and it goes through the process paper-wise, you know? Uh, this is an electronic way of doing that. This will mirror exactly what we do through paper, but electronically and obviously approve any inefficiencies we have with the paper process. Uh, the departments that will, will be utilizing this, um, will be broken into different phases of implementation. Obviously, we can't implement this all at once. It'd be pure chaos. Uh, we wanna start with the departments that make sense first, like the Building Department, Board of Health, and the Fire Department. Uh, most permits go through the, through those departments, especially the, obviously, the, the, uh, the Building Department. Other departments that will be eventually phased in will be Engineering, Public Works, Water Sewer Department, Planning, Conservation, and Zoning Board. As you can see, Planning, Conservation, Zoning Board, those kinda go together very well. Uh, those are all the boards and committees that receive, uh, submittals. Uh, and then lastly, the Clerk's Office and Select Board for their licensing will utilize this, this program, this, uh, this software. Other departments that will benefit from this, though, that may not actually have permits through it, but will certainly benefit communication through all the town departments, will certainly be the Assessors Department and the Treasurers Department, uh, for obvious reasons. Uh, the communication will just be there when there's a building permit issued or a certificate of occupancy issued. Everybody we want to be included in the email says a CO has been issued, uh, or whatever it may be, for the notification. We can design this program in whatever way we want. Uh, it's, it's gonna be fantastic, to be honest with you. I'm very excited about this, if you can't already tell. Most of you probably can't tell because you probably think I'm a pretty serious guy, but I'm, I am very excited about this. So, so, um... I mean, obviously, the benefits for electronic permitting, um, are faster permit issuance, you know, less time, uh, sitting on a desk. Some of these permits are very low-level permits that, once you submit the fee, there's not much review, and the permit gets issued almost instantaneously, like a, sometimes an electrical or plumbing permit, the things of that nature. It's actually proven that contractors really love this because this system's used through different towns. They can put in one, one code in for multiple towns. They don't have to always fill in all their information. Uh, there are some contractors in town that may not, uh, you know, like this too much, but, uh, but generally, uh, yeah. But generally, the, most of the contractors are gonna like this, the ones that do a lot of work in all the towns. Um, it, it's really gonna, uh, capture more revenue. It's been proven, there's been MMA conferences, I think that some FinCon members have been to. They've, they've heard this before, that contractors have to take time out of their busy days to submit simple electrical and plumbing permits and things of that nature, uh, to the town. That's billable hours for them. You know, if they're a one- or two-man show, that's, that's a big deal. So they just, they just put, put the furnace in, or they just do the plumbing work, or they do the electrical work without pulling a permit at their own risk. We would not know that, obviously. This, I think most contractors, they want the permit, but they need an easy way of doing it. So this system will allow them to do it at seven or eight o'clock at night when they get home, or I can submit that permit application in, done, we collect the fee, and we move on. Um, obviously, everything's remote. Uh, there's all the ac, all the access to the information's right through the, the system. All the information that we require to be submitted, plans, documents, everybody can see. Every one of you can go on the, the real-time portal that will be on our web, on our webpage. Uh, you can click the documents that were submitted. You can see it. You can see the status of the permit. You know, there's, there's, the transparency's phenomenal, you know, I mean, everybody can kinda see where it is. It's great for me because you'll be able to see it, and you'll call me up, Mark, why is my permit waiting for seven days in the, um, Planning Department? I'll, I'll use our new town planner as a, as a guinea pig here. Why is it waiting for seven days in the Planning Department? And then I'll have to track it down. Every day, I plan on coming into my office, looking at this, as the, the Director of Development Services, kinda seeing what permits are hanging out there. Why are they being, why are they hanging out there? It's really easy to see. I can literally see, if I set a five-day review period for something, and it's at day seven, I see it right there. It's very easy, within seconds. And I track it down. I go talk to the department. Why, why is this getting hung up? What's, what's the issue? Things of that nature. Um, you can also do the, the inspections, the mobile inspections with this. Every inspector will have a tablet. They can go there. They can take the pictures of the inspection. It proves that you were there, first of all, which is great. Uh, and you have to write notes on the inspection. It gets uploaded right to the portal. There's no way of hiding that information. Everybody can see that, that information. Um, online payments, which is key. Uh, less, less turnovers for departments. Literally, everything can be through credit card, uh, which really is a great way for, for businesses to do business in town. That's what they want. They, there's so many people that come in, and we charge them a fee, and they don't have the cash on them. Uh, they don't have the check or whatever it is, and they have to come back and go to their car, come back, or go home and come back. It just makes it easier to do business in our town by having this program. It's easy to follow communication, which is ki, kinda key on this. There's actually like a chat features on these things. You can actually chat back and forth through it. It can send you emails. It's all part of the record, so... Um, if, if you say, Mark, I, I sent you five chat messages on this, and I say, no, you didn't. Well, you either did it, you didn't. You can go right into here and, and see that, so... Uh, it's very transparent, uh, that, that benefit of, of the program. What I really like is, what I kind of already mentioned, is the, the process accountability of this. It really makes our departments very accountable, uh, for our work that we do, and it keeps us on our toes to make sure the permits are getting issued in a, in a timely fashion. If they're not, all you can see that, uh, on the portal, the front-facing portal on the website. The, the GIS system gets integrated into this, so every permit application's linked to Apostle and our GIS. We've worked very hard with the GIS, so you can access all the information through the GIS with, with this program, which is kinda cool, I think. I've already mentioned the real-time public-facing portal. If you haven't seen the copy I put in the backup information, that's what it'll look like. You can go to the Town of Easton. There's a lot of towns that use, um, these, these, these e-permitting programs. Over two-hundred towns out of the three-hundred-and-fifty-one have electronic permitting. My gut feeling is most of the towns that don't have electronic permitting are probably in the far western portion of the state. Mostly, everybody has electronic permitting, um, in, in the state, at least in the area we do business. Uh, definitely check out the Town of Easton page. You'll, you'll love it, uh, how the portal looks. Uh, I've got a cost breakdown in the backup information of how we got to the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar number. Um, you know, you have initial setup costs. You have annual fees for the first couple of years. All that's rolled into this four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. My, my idea behind that is within two years, this program will be fully implemented and operational. Um, and we're trying to capture the, the annual fees at that same time. After that, the annual fees will be rolled in, most likely into our IT budget, um, for this program. Also, lastly, and, and most importantly, I think, is the town's worked very hard to kinda reduce the burden of the town meeting. So, Pam McCaffrey and myself, we applied for, uh, a community compact grant, and we received two-hundred-thousand dollars for this, for this project. So we actually have two-hundred-thousand dollars sitting in our, our bank account right now. It's not even a reimbursable, uh, grant. It's just there to use for this, uh, which is, which is fantastic. Uh, that's, that's all I got at this point. I'd be, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tisdale. All right, first up, Mr. Garen.
Thank you. Jim Garen, Precinct Six. An easy question for you. Will this software also be used for the private, uh, say, parade permits and, uh, and the like? Or temporary liquor licenses?
Oh, yeah. For all the, all the Select Board licensing, we're gonna roll into this program.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any other technical questions? Oh, Mr. Anzavino, go ahead. Identify yourself, please.
Thank you. John Anzavino, Precinct Four. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. You just mentioned, Mark, that you had a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. Is that on top of the four-fifty you would need to do this? Or is that gonna be reducing what you need from the four-fifty?
Right, so, so this backup information is, is, the cost estimates in there, the four-fifty was based on no grant. So now that we've got the grant, it would be, we could take two-hundred-thousand dollars off. Four-fifty's the total cost.
Would you be amenable to doing that, to reduce this to two-fifty?
Yeah, I, and this is the same backup information we had at the Finance Committee meeting.
Right, but obviously, the grants come in sense.
Absolutely, one-hundred percent.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with technical questions? Mr. Murphy.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. Uh, would that have to, that last conversation, would that have to be an amendment to this article?
Well, that would guarantee it. My only problem is I require amendments forty-eight hours in advance. It does sound familiar.
I withdraw my question.
Hang on a while. Let me just confer Town Council for a moment. Since it's not a complicated amendment, as Ms. Anzavino said, just a, a number, and a few other people mentioned, it's just a number, I will accept that friendly amendment. Okay, to reduce that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so... We still have to vote on the amendment, then we go back to the main motion. Can someone jot that down just to say, insert, you can just do a motion to replace four-hundred-and-fifty thousand with whatever the dollar amount is?
Yes, in, in this motion, I wanna change the four-hundred-and-fifty thousand from free cash to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Fourth?
All right, and to make it easier, I'll do a voice vote. If it's any doubt in mind, in my, my little mind here, I'll have to ask for a clicker. It's all cash, correct? All right. I'm gonna ask for a voice vote. All those in favor of the amended motion to, to, to drop that number down to two-fifty, say aye, please.
Aye!
All those opposed? Hearing none. I declare that a vote. Okay, now we're back to the main motion. Are we able to change that at all, or... We're on, okay, we just take them, make them, uh, we need a moment to edit that, edit the screen.
While they're doing that, just keep in mind that something's gonna be coming back to you a little later for this extra free cash to be put somewhere. So don't close the meeting too quickly, please.
Well, it's up to the town meeting representatives. It's up to their wisdom. The team is working on it. You have a question, Linda? No, I don't think we closed. Hopefully, that's just water in there. Could you just identify yourself to the... Town meeting reps, please?
It was closed. Um, Rose Eckler, Precinct One. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Do you believe that implementing this program will help to, um, alleviate a lot of work at the town hall by people that you might be able to save that way, too?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're gonna have less paper transactions, for sure. Uh, we're, we're gonna be monitoring a different system, so I don't think we're gonna have all this extra free time on our hands, to be honest with you. Um, but, but, uh, it's gonna be a more efficient use of time, let's put it that way.
Thank you. All right, uh, before we vote on the main motion, we need to just, I wanna, um, we voted on the amended motion. I just wanna hear any pro and con debate? Is there any?
I'd just like to, uh, if I might...
Sure, go right ahead, Mr. Judo.
You may have noticed that, uh, Mr. Tisdale was a little bit longer in his, uh, comments than he usually is. It may have expressed that he may be a little bit interested in this. I hope we, I hope it's a hundred percent on this vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're still in pro and con debate. Mr. Terry?
Richard Terry, Precinct Eight.
You have to get a little closer.
Richard Terry, Precinct Eight. I'm strongly in favor of this motion because, as a contractor working for Murphy Colan Oil, I'm all over half this state doing paperwork. I've spent an entire day in one town going from department to department and not getting it done. And that adds cost to the job. So not only will it help me keep my cost out, be more competitive, but many of the towns right now that have this kind of software refuses to take paper. And we can pay them electronically. It gets done like that in my office. It gets done at the local locality we're working in. The towns that don't have this kind of software, it takes a long time. And a lot of contractors delay it, then it gets forgotten. So this will actually bring in more cash on the permits. Please vote, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else pro and con debate? Seeing none. Okay, we already voted on the amended motion. This is back to the main motion. It's been edited with the correct number. Are we ready to vote? Please vote now.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let me just, um, announce the vote. Article sixty-two, motion passes. One oh-five years, one no. Okay, let me just announce the vote. Article 62, motion passes, 105 years, 1 no, 1 abstention. I declare that a vote. Okay, we're moving right to Article 63, Create Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund. This appears on the top of page 56. And I need a motion first, Mr. Von Anokian.
That the town vote to accept the fourth paragraph of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B, which allows dedication without further appropriation of all or a percentage not less than 25% of particular fees, charges, or receipts to a stabilization fund to be named the Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund, established under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B, to be effective for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2023.
Okay, the motion has been made and has been seconded by John Anzavino. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 10 to 0 to accept and recommend to town meeting Article 63.
Okay, thank you. Now it's time for the presentation. I believe, Mr. Rowe, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. So this allows the town meeting to set up a special stabilization fund, which will accept revenues from a particular source. And there was legislation in the previous session of the legislature to treat this money. What we have, we have settlements with manufacturers, retailers, and wholesalers for opioid settlements. And there was legislation to make it be able to be spent by the municipalities without appropriation, similar to a grant. That legislation failed. Governor Healy has legislation again in this session to do it. But in the meantime, many communities are setting up these funds. They, so they would need to be appropriated normally, you know, 2/3's vote at a future town meeting. But our wonderfully dedicated substance abuse counselor, Stephanie Patton, has presented as a wonderful presentation on page 617. I hope you've had a chance to review it. We'll be collecting over almost $1.2 million over the next 18 years. And Stephanie is in the audience. If anybody has any questions as to what programs would fund these operations, or would fund, would be used to fund these, how these funds would be used. So that's all I have, Mr. Moderator. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rowe. Technical question period. Okay, go ahead, please identify yourself, please.
Yeah, Denise Bronston, precinct two. Does this include fentanyl?
Will you be able to answer that, Mr. Rowe?
It's, I don't know the answer to that. It's a general opioids, so I, fentanyl.
I think it should include fentanyl, because.
You have to, you're going to ask a question, a second, a follow-up question? You can come back for pro and con debate or comments.
Okay.
Thank you, Denise. Pat Colburn?
Pat Colburn, precinct four. I read through the material in the back, and my question is about the task force and how the money will be used. And I'm wondering if there's any intention of bringing some of the citizens in on that task force, because I think sometimes the information from people touched by this issue might be a little more, maybe from a different angle than the department heads that are working on this. So is there any intention on bringing residents in when it comes to how we'll spend this money if we put it aside?
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you. Stephanie Patton is our opiate coordinator, program coordinator. So I think, I don't want to speak on her behalf, but I'm pretty certain she'll be bringing residents in to get their feedback on how best those funds can be used. Hope that's helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, did Stephanie want to speak? Did you want to say anything, Stephanie? Sure, go, just identify yourself. Be easy if you come down here. Take a moment.
Mr. Moderator, I apologize to Stephanie. I didn't know she was in the house.
That's okay, Mr. Town Manager. Take your time, Stephanie. Take your time. What's that?
No, it's all right. Oops, thank you. I'm not quite as tall as some of you, so I'm going to try to adjust that. So I want to speak to the question about the community input, and I can also answer the fentanyl question. So when we talk about opioids.
Could you just identify yourself?
I'm sorry, I'm Stephanie Patton. I'm the Prevention Coordinator for the Town of Stoughton. So yes, yes, fentanyl would be included when we think about opioids, so absolutely. That language would be inclusive of that. And then to speak to the second question about including additional stakeholders and citizens, absolutely. So there has been a small group of us who have been working together behind the scenes to make sure the town is able to take in this settlement money, because there's a lot coming. And we are proposing a strategy that you can sort of see in your books. But it is my intention that before we spend any of these dollars, that we would collect additional citizen input, including from people and families who have been directly touched by this issue. I think that's really important. There are definitely people involved in our coalition work who are folks who themselves are in recovery or are involved in the treatment system, and so we have some of that input. But it's my intention to do some more of that work before we really move forward and spend any of these dollars. We wanted to make sure that the town had set up the account so that as these funds come in, because they've been coming in, we're able to put them in a place that we can access them moving forward. So that's really what that article is about.
Okay, thank you. What do you just, stay right there. Any other technical questions?
Yes, Denise Bronston.
Denise, you already asked your question, so I'm not going to go around second time for questions. You can come back for comments, okay? All right, Lisa, please identify yourself, please.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, precinct two. So have we already received funds from the settlements that we are unable to access, and we're just creating this so that it can be specifically directed?
Who can answer that for us? Bill Rowe, go right ahead.
So right now, as the statutes stand, this money, as it comes in, goes into the general fund and will flow into free cash. So it cannot be used until free cash is certified. And then it would expire, once it's certified, it would expire on the following June 30th. Whereas this particular fund would be a permanent fund, and the money would be available at any time until it's used up.
Okay, thank you. You have one more question, Lisa?
Can you just clarify that? It comes, it would come into the general operating fund, and you're saying if we don't spend it until a certain time, can you just clarify that part for me?
So if it's general fund money, which currently it is, the opioid settlements, it has to come in, it comes in as general fund revenue, and then it closes out to free cash at the end of the fiscal year. And then, once that is certified in the fall, then it's available for appropriation by town meeting. Whereas this particular fund, those revenues will be dedicated. It's only one vote needed. And then, year after year, all those opioid settlement funds would come into the stabilization fund and then be voted out by town meeting as necessary.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowe. Anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none. This is pro and con debate. Denise was, I recognized Denise first. Please state your name and, go ahead.
Denise Bronston, precinct two. China makes fentanyl, and I believe, if I'm correct, they've killed 150,000 19-year-olds.
Okay, thank you. Cynthia Walsh, and then you're next.
Yes, Cynthia Walsh, precinct three, and I urge you to support this. Those of you with very long memories may recall that the tobacco settlement money that was supposed to help us fight young folks fighting, I mean, young folks getting addicted to nicotine and tobacco, the bulk of that was never spent for that purpose. This way, we can make sure that the companies that made our kids sick and die, that money will help the living to remain living.
Okay, thank you. Please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Lee McGuire, precinct five. So I'm the president and CEO of an addiction treatment nonprofit company in Boston. Stephanie has been doing such great work here in Stoughton, and addiction has been affecting everybody at every level. This is money coming from the state, a lot of, or from the federal government, a lot is going to come down, and it's going to be really wasteful if we don't use it. And the state is telling us to be really creative and thoughtful about the programming and how to use it. So it's going to be really beneficial, and I say, please vote yes. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for pro and con debate or comments? Mr. Banis?
Yeah, Peter Banis, precinct two. Just a compliment to Stephanie. She's been involved. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Youth Commission for many years. Stephanie started in the Oasis program. We finally got her position into the budget, I don't remember how many years ago, but the work that she's done and the luck that Stoughton has to have such a successful youth commission, and what she's done for the high school, UI United, WE ARE United, whatever, she's been doing the work with the schools for so long. Please vote yes for this. This is a fantastic way to utilize the money and not have it go out the door. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Kaby?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In late December of 2019, my family had to bury an 11-year-old niece of mine who died from fentanyl. Her mother had been giving it to her so that she could sleep better, not prescribed. And they were addicted, both were addicted. So I've seen the effect of this. It's horrible. It's a horror show. I support this. I hope you guys will as well. Put this money into a stabilization fund so it can be used with the purpose of helping people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaby. Mr. Gino?
I also support this article, but I have a question, and I may have a comment on this afterwards. Mr. Rowe, is there, is any of the money on page 622, it indicates in 2020, we got $149,332. Did that money go into the general fund?
Goes into the general fund, yes.
And has that money then been included in free cash for this year?
If it was received in fiscal '22, it would be included in this year's free cash number. If it was received in fiscal '23, it will close out to the general fund on June 30, and then will be certified in the fall as free cash.
Then we have.
One last question, Mr. Gino.
We have for this program then lost that $149,000 and the $70,729,000 for 2023? Is that correct?
I wouldn't say it was lost. You could interpret it.
It's not being used for this program.
Well, you could interpret it to say that that portion of the substance abuse prevention budget might be funded by that, but, but yeah, it's, it goes into the overall pot. Substance abuse prevention is right now funded by the overall pot of the general fund money, free cash.
So my comment.
Go ahead, sir.
We have $200,000 in free cash that we just received from this, from this last article. I suggest that we put it into this account rather than put it in the stabilization fund, because there's an awful lot of things that need to be done to support the people in the town that have problems. And we're not at the point of dealing with that, so we can't deal with it now, but keep it in mind at the end of this discussion.
Yeah, this is only to create the stabilization fund, correct?
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else for pro and con debate, comments? Yes, go ahead, Lisa. Please identify. This is pro and con debate.
Lisa Lyons, precinct two. I just also want to clarify that we could probably, even if it went into the general fund, we have, what, 74 or more articles here tonight, at any time, we could vote to specifically fund a certain amount that's determined. It's just a thought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for comments, pro and con debate? Go ahead, please identify yourself.
I ask that we pass this article.
Could you just identify yourself on the TV?
Tamisha Civil, precinct one. As a probation officer who works in Stoughton District Court, I deal with a lot of participants that are addicted to drugs, especially opiates. So I ask that we pass the article and get this going. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Cynthia Walsh?
Either I'm confused or someone else is, but Article 63 establishes the fund. Article 64 is where we will put money into the fund. Is that correct?
That's correct. Article 63 creates the opioid.
Some previous speakers are out of order until we get to 64.
That is generally correct. I let Mr. Gino speak, to point of personal privilege, excuse me. Mr. Murphy? Okay, question's been moved and seconded. Who seconded that? Jay Walsh, thank you. What precinct? Precinct three, for the record. All right, we're going to take it by voice vote. This means to cut off the bait. We need a 2/3's majority. If there's any doubt in the mind of the moderator, we'll have to use the clickers. I'm going to ask for a voice vote right now. All those in favor of cutting off the bait, say aye. All those oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, we're going to go right to the motion here. This is to create the opioid settlements, and we need a 2/3's to create it. Okay, we need 2/3's vote to create it, just to remind everybody. Are we ready to vote? We're voting. Please now vote. Please vote now. Okay, Article 63, motion passes, 100 yes, 2 no, 0 abstentions. Okay, we're moving on. We're moving on to Article 64 at the bottom of the page. This is to dedicate revenues to the Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund. All right, I need a motion, Mr. Von Anokian.
That the town vote to dedicate 100% of the opioid settlement funds received to the Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund, established under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B, effective for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2023.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded by John Anzavino. Can I have a Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 10 to 0 to accept and recommend to town meeting Article 64.
Okay, on Article 64, Mr. Bill Rowe, you're the presenter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this is the vote to specifically dedicate those opioid settlement funds to the stabilization fund that we just established. It's a one-time vote, and all of the funds for the next, how many years, 18 or whatever they are, come in. Unless this vote is rescinded by town meeting, all of those funds would go into, will go into the stabilization fund if this article is approved. Thank you.
Is that all? Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowe. All right, this is technical questions. John Anzavino?
John Anzavino, precinct four. My technical question is this. The motion says that this is going to be effective the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, which would be dedicating any funds that we received in '23. Do we have a number on that? Because you have, you said it would go to free cash if there was no fund. So if it's in free cash, do we know how much that is? Because we know we're going to have somebody looking to put money in there, but is this author, the money we received for FY '23?
No, this would be anything that would be received fiscal '24 and later. Anything that would be received in fiscal '23 would close to free cash. So this is all future. July 1, 2023 would be fiscal '24, right? So this is all future. July one, 2023 would be fiscal twenty-four. Right?
My mistake. Thank you.
That's okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowe, for the explanation. All right, okay, next up is Mr. Bob Cone. Can someone hand Mr. Cone the microphone? You okay?
I'm a little confused. Robert Cone, precinct five. Our budget ends July thirtieth of this year.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. Does that mean the funds from June thirtieth on will go into this
That's correct, Mr. Moderator.
I think you hit it on the head. I just want to make sure in my own mind we're clarified that July first, this money will be going into this account.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes, permanently.
Permanently.
Unless rescinded by town meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're in the period of technical questions. Anybody else? Karen Clip? Please identify yourself when you get to a microphone.
Karen Clip, precinct eight. Will individuals who are having trouble getting clean have access to putting a claim in for this account?
Could anybody answer that?
Can you clarify that question? I'm not...
For example, my son battled ten years and was retasting on our family. Very expensive to get him in treatment and stuff. Will this fund also be help another family not go through what my family went through?
Oh, I hear what you're saying. So our intention, yes, is to use these dollars to help families, but I think it would be helping families in terms of helping connect people to services. I'm not sure if that's what you're asking, or if you're asking if families could sort of receive funds directly out of this money.
Yes.
So I think our intention isn't to distribute the money directly to families. However, we're looking at services to support families, to make sure that folks are getting the services that they need. And there's a whole other piece to these settlement dollars that are coming into the state, where the state is looking at also the treatment systems and the larger systems that are happening outside of the individual cities and towns. And there's actually a lot more money. So when you think about how much money we're getting, the state is receiving a lot more to really bolster all of that stuff to really support families and to make those services more available. So...
Will you be also looking to open maybe a safe house or a clean house in Stoughton using this money?
I don't think we...
To only help our residents who are dealing with, the police know they're dealing with opioids or you get notification.
Yeah, I don't know that that's a possibility with these particular dollars, but I wouldn't, I don't know what the intentions are with the state dollars in terms of what is distributed throughout the state. So I'm not sure I can, I don't know if I'm totally answering your question. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. John Rock's up next.
John Rock, precinct three. Obviously, I'm very much in favor of this and thank you for your work. My question is, how will money come out of this fund? Does it require a town meeting vote to allocate it?
Bill Rowe, can you answer that one?
Yes, it would require two-thirds vote to take it out.
Okay, so the only times it can be taken out are town meeting or special town meeting. That doesn't seem very flexible. I wonder if there's any way around that.
Just stand by for a minute, Mr. Rock.
Yeah, it's not grant money, so it has to be appropriated by town meeting. Unless, you know, unless the legislation changes, if it passes this round and they treat it like grant money, then it could be spent without appropriation. But currently it has to be appropriated.
I guess that's the answer, but it doesn't seem...
You can come back for pro and con.
Yeah, I mean, I'm for this, so...
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Technical questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go into pro and con debate. Anybody pro and con debater Mr. Gito? Go ahead, Mr. Gito. I can't hear you with the... The question is, is this the time to add money to this account? Let me check with town council. Can we add money to the account?
I think through you to the meeting, Mr. Moderator, I believe what Mr. Gito is suggesting is that he'd like to propose an amendment to include additional funding in this article. Is that correct, Mr. Gito? So in that case, if you consider that within the scope, then Mr. Gito can make his amendment.
Are you asking for a specific dollar amounts? Yeah, he's having problems with the microphone. Just stand by for a second. Can someone give him another microphone? No. We're going to get another microphone, too.
I'd like to add the two hundred thousand dollars that we put into free cash.
I can, let me explain. I can allow that, you know, since it's within the, I feel it's within the scope discretion of the moderator. And it's up to the town meeting members to vote accordingly, up or down.
So that's the motion, to add the two hundred thousand dollars from free cash to this account.
So when you say free cash, are you saying a dollar amount?
Two hundred thousand. The two hundred thousand dollars from the other article that we were able to reduce.
I just want that clarified because I heard you say free cash. I'd like to hear a certain dollar amount, which you mentioned now, two hundred thousand dollars.
That is correct.
So could you read that motion to me one more time?
And that two hundred thousand dollars be appropriated from free cash to fund this.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Pat Colburn. We just have to... We have to vote on the amended motion. Okay, is it up on the screen yet? Okay, just stand by. We're going to first vote on the amended motion.
On two.
I apologize for rushing the team over here.
You ruled this was not an expansion of the scope.
Correct. Yeah, I ruled, as John Anzavino just said, not an expansion of the scope. Moderator's discretion, just to be clear. Sure. You wanted to speak into the microphone? Did everybody hear Kevin on these? That's true. And I think these are called boost neck microphones. Please don't grab it by the neck. Grab it by the base. Okay? Okay, thank you. Just stand by. Does anybody want to debate this? Anybody debate on this amended motion? Okay, well first, would you like to debate it? You have a question?
I have a question about Heather Kirby, precinct six. I'm looking at page two, six hundred twenty-seven, under the proposed budget, which says that the settlement funds will average one hundred eight, over one hundred eight thousand dollars. And just looking at the numbers on the next page, unless I'm looking in the wrong place, that math is not quite right for fiscal years twenty-four to twenty-eight. Those numbers would not average a hundred, over a hundred eight thousand dollars.
On what page were you referring to?
Six hundred twenty-seven.
Okay, can we have an answer to that?
Um, ooh, sorry. So when I did the estimates, we did it over the, I'm actually looking at that page, too. We did the estimates for FY twenty-four through FY twenty-eight. So it was for the initial several years of those settlement dollars coming in because our intention was to evaluate the success of what we were doing. And you're right, because the dollar amounts do decrease over time and, you know, it's going to be a question of like, how much money gets rolled over? So I think, did I miss the first part of your question?
I am only looking at two...
You were only looking at those years?
I'm looking at those years, yeah.
So I, oh, so the other issue is because, and I'm not an accountant, so it is also possible that I did the math incorrectly, but because we're starting out with, we were projecting that we were starting out with seed money that was not getting spent at all in that first year, that that money gets rolled into those other years going forward. So the initial hundred and however much that was, that wasn't spent in this first year was getting averaged into the years after that. Does that make sense?
Was the first year twenty-twenty-two?
The first year is twenty-twenty-two. So there, as they were talking about, there's money that's come in that we didn't use.
Yeah, including that, the average is not above a hundred thousand.
Okay. I apologize if there was a math error.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll look at you in one minute.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Christine Wilber, precinct eight. So I also have just a quick question about the money. So the two hundred thousand dollars, is that coming from the two hundred and twenty thousand sixty-one that went to free cash that we didn't spend? Because if you add the amount from twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, it's two twenty-sixty.
Can we get clarification on that? Bill Rowe, go ahead.
So we have two hundred and seventy-five thousand of free cash remaining. Seventy-five for an article. What was the question? I'm sorry.
So I'm just saying, so for the past two years, right, we've gotten money, but there was no place to put it. Is that, am I reading this chart correctly?
For fiscal twenty-two and fiscal twenty-three, yeah, that will go into free cash.
So basically, well, so that adds up to two hundred twenty thousand sixty-one dollars. So that is just about, it's a little bit more than what that is. So we're kind of just moving the money that would have gone into the fund if it existed into the fund now, minus like twenty grand?
It's like trying to play catch-up, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to just double check. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Bob Cone?
Bob Cone, precinct five. I'm in favor of this article, but this town is taking taxpayers' money, because that's what that two hundred thousand dollars is, taxpayers' money, and putting this in this account. When we established the other article, I thought we were going to get it from the drug companies and put it into this account. We represent the people of Stoughton. I'm in favor of this, but I'm not in favor of taking two hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' money that could be used somewhere else. Folks, we spent a lot of money here and where do you see what's coming up in the near future? And we better be very careful how we spend our money. But I definitely don't want to take taxpayers' money and put it into this. For the drug companies, I'd drain them of everything they have, but I disapprove of taking taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anzavino?
John Anzavino, precinct four. Just to address the issue from the previous speaker. In twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, as a previous speaker said, we received approximately two hundred and ten thousand dollars, which went into the general fund, which becomes free cash eventually if it's not used. So the two hundred thousand dollars that is being proposed for this is just doing a catch-up from the money that the town did receive for this reason that was never put in because we didn't have the account. So just a point of clarification, that's all. And I hope everybody supports this.
Okay, thank you. We're in pro and con debate, if I didn't make that clear. Mr. Kirby?
Yeah, I guess I'm still looking for a clarification, so this may be a question. But, Mr. Moderator, through you to the town...
Could you just say your name and precinct?
Oh, Robert Kirby, precinct six. You alluded to the fact that the money has been coming into the general fund, but there's also been an outlay from the general fund towards programming that works to deal with the opioid crisis. Am I correct? And can we determine what that net difference is from what we've received and what we've put out?
We're in pro and con debate, but I will allow that last question, okay? No more, no further questions.
Yeah, so we have a substance abuse prevention budget. I don't have that file right open right now, but I can give you how much was appropriated for fiscal twenty-four and fiscal So for fiscal twenty-four, we're appropriating one hundred and three thousand eight fifty-five. And for fiscal twenty-three, we appropriated one hundred and one thousand seven twenty, or I said, should you appropriate it, one hundred and one thousand seven twenty-eight. So one hundred one thousand twenty-three, one oh three into fiscal twenty-four. Equals pretty close to what the amended motion is calling for.
Okay. Okay, let's move on. Becker, you're up next. Becker Marks. State your name and precinct number. And pro and con debate.
Becker Marks, precinct seven. Can I ask a point of information?
Sure.
So is it possible, the way I understand this, is that the original money went in, general fund, we spent it. Is there a line item, this is through you to town accountant, is there a line item that states because of the funding source, it was separated out and this is what we spent this money on in the past fiscal year? Or once it hit the general fund, the origination is gone?
Basically, yeah. You think of the entire budget. It's funded by, you know, estimated tax revenues, local receipts, et cetera, free cash. So...
So there wasn't a separate line item?
That's not a specific line item that's funding the substance abuse prevention budget.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's keep moving. Mr. Coleman?
Try again. Okay. Eric Coleman, precinct five. There's a lot of money in the stabilization fund. And I'm going to ask a question, but it's rhetorical, so you don't have to answer it. Do you need this other two hundred thousand dollars?
Okay, it's rhetorical. We're not going to answer that, but thank you. Jim Guerin, we're in pro and con debate.
Yes, Jim Guerin, precinct six. I'm reading this proposed motion. It says the town vote to dedicate one hundred percent of the opioid settlement funds received. Now, you know, this is, I don't know what we're doing, but we've received two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. It looks like we're going to put two hundred thousand dollars. We're still short nineteen thousand dollars if that motion is the way I read it.
Can we get clarification from someone on that? Do you have a point of inquiry?
Received.
Are you yet to use the microphone? No, for TV purposes, we need to...
If you insert the words "to be received," I think it makes more sense.
That's, I would accept that.
I think that's where Mr. Guerin's coming from.
Stand by for...
Town council will agree with me on that?
Okay, I'm told there's a distinction without a difference. Some legalese there, okay? Distinction without a difference. If you want it, that's fine. All right? So any other pro and con debate? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Paul Belaboo. I'm sorry, Pat, I'll get back to you.
That's okay. Whenever.
I didn't see you.
That's fine. Do you want to go?
Paul Belaboo, precinct three. My assumption of the comments that have been made is that originally the funding that came in has been appropriated and was used, not through the stabilization fund, but through the regular fund. Now we are setting up a stabilization fund, so any money coming in at this point forward would be put in the stabilization fund and funded out to this appropriation. So my belief is that the two hundred thousand dollars that we... fund and funded out to this appropriation. So my belief is that the $200,000 that we are putting in there is just like a gift. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on. Pat Colburn, you're next.
Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. I'd urge you to vote for this amended motion. I understand somewhat where people are coming from, but at the same times, it feels like we're carrying on that stigma. We don't want taxpayers' dollars used to be treating this crisis. These are citizens of Stoughton. I think we need to help them. I know that I don't have children in the school system anymore, and I gladly stand up and support that budget every year. I've never, God willing, had to call an ambulance or the police department, but I still support those budgets. So I'm hoping people will put this $200,000 in. It's serendipity that it freed up, and it's roughly around the amount that we didn't directly put into this fund. So I would just appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. Move the question.
Okay, Mr. Murphy makes a motion to move the question. That's the two-thirds majority required. I'll take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? All right, the ayes have it. This is just the amended motion that's on the screen right now. Are we ready to vote? Please vote now. The amendments, it's just a simple, just a reminder, by a simple majority. Okay, the amendment, Article 64, passes. Seventy-four, yes. Twenty-six, no. Two abstentions. All right, now I'd like to get right back to the main motion, which requires the two-thirds. That's what I'm told, right? Two-thirds, too. We just voted the amendment, the amendment. You got to vote the main motion. Well, can I ask for clarification from Town Council?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, the previous vote was to approve the proposed amendment to the main motion. Now we're back to the original motion, to the primary motion, the main motion that was made at the beginning. So now we need a vote on that. It requires pursuant to statute, two-thirds vote.
Okay, I hope that's clear to everybody. Well, it's, okay.
Mr. Moderator, a point of information?
No, I'm not going to take any more point of information. It's clear that we're voting on the main motion, okay?
Does the $200,000 go into that?
Yes, the $200,000 goes into that. It's just procedurally, you have the amended motion, then you have to go back to the main motion, okay? So this is, I got to go forward once we have it up on the screen. Oh, you wrote it?
Yeah.
Just stand by for a moment, please. Okay, are we ready? Okay, the main motion passes for Article 64. Eighty-seven, yes. Fourteen, no. One abstentions. All right, we slowed down a little bit, but I thought that was an important article to discuss. And we're going to move forward again. Article 65 at the top of page 57, deposit to, I'm sorry, thank you very much, I'm moving along. 66 was dismissed. Article 67, it's bottom of page 57, fund feasibility study of the South Elementary School. I need a motion, Mr. Vaughn, and okay, please?
That the town vote to appropriate $250,000 to be expended under the direction of the South School Building Committee for a feasibility study for the possible replacement or renovation of or addition to the South Elementary School located at 171 Ash Street, Stoughton, including but not limited to professional services such as design, planning, and architectural services, environmental testing, owner's project management services, and any other incidental and related expenses for which feasibility study the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any cost the town incurs in connection with the feasibility study that is in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow $250,000 and to issue bonds or notes therefore pursuant to Chapter 44 and/or Chapter 29(c) of the general laws or any other enabling authority.
Okay, the motion has been made, and it has been seconded by John Anzavino. I need a Finance Committee report, please.
Finance Committee voted 10 to 0 to accept and recommend the town meeting Article 67.
All right, I need Intergovernmental Relations Committee report.
Intergovernmental Relations voted 5 to 0 to accept and recommend to Town Meeting Article 67.
Thank you very much. All right, now it's time for the presentation. We have Attorney TJ Recupero. Please introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to your membership. My name is TJ Recupero. I serve on the South Elementary School Building Committee. And with me here today is, or this evening, excuse me, is Tim Bonfati of Vertex, the Owner's Project Manager, and of course, Dr. Rob, Superintendent of Schools. So this was, if the body will recall, this was originally approved in the spring annual town meeting 2021, and had to come back in December of 2021 for a revote. I actually don't know why that had to happen, so you probably know more about it than I do. But the point is, the amount stayed the same, and it was $750,000 appropriation for a feasibility study. Somewhere in your warrant booklet, somewhere around page 1752, the support documents for this article are, and you'll see a list of what other communities have appropriated for feasibility, for feasibility study within the MSBA process. That was a project born out of more curiosity than anything else that I took on when we started looking for an owner's project manager in spring of 2022, because it was suggested, in a little investigative, casual investigation, suggested to me that we might be a little tight on the amount that was appropriated, because of course, costs have been rising over the last several years. And I knew we appropriated $1 million for the feasibility study for the high school. Doing the math, that was 2013 or so, 2014. So many years had passed, and I was saying, geez, you know, is that going to be enough? Well, it turns out, it wasn't, and not for lack of good faith and due diligence on behalf of the Building Committee. And of course, it's professionals, and certainly Dr. Rob. Let me explain. So feasibility study has three distinct components. There is a preliminary design program that you submit to the MSBA. Then you submit a preferred schematic, and that's where you submit after having, you know, presenting these options through your study. You actually select one. It's actually called the preferred solution, which we're proposing will solve our problems with our building that were identified in our facilities master plan. So that's the stage we're at right now. We're determining what the preferred solution will be. We can do all that with the money that was appropriated. What we can't do is the last component that's required under our feasibility study agreement with the MSBA, and that's called prefer schematic. It's a level of detail that is far beyond what we can do for $750,000. The money is not, and this, you can read better than I can say in the documentation provided. This is not because our professional team has, you know, charged us more than we anticipated or anything like that. Tim Bonfati, you may recognize, he worked with, actually, same company, different name. It used to be Compass Project Management. The designer through feasibility study for us is Drummy Roseanne Anderson, Carl Franceschi. These were the same people who were involved with, designed, and built this wonderful building that we're all sitting in the middle of right now. So these people knew the town better than anyone, and they were in a position to work at a bit of a discount. Thank you very much. And also to take advantage of certain economies of scale, prior work, then put that to, into this project. So my point being is, we're getting it for as cheap as we can, and we still couldn't squeak by. You look at the chart that I pointed out was in the warrant book, the average for feasibility study, and I subtracted out a couple of outliers, is about $1.2 million. And as I said, in 2013 or '12, we appropriated $1 million. So $750,000, you can see, just by comparison, a casual comparison, you can see is going to be tight, but you know, we'll give it a chance. That's what the Building Committee did. It will get us pretty far. I'll wrap up this way by saying, I mentioned the three components. So the first two components, and we're in the second one right now, we can do that with, how should I say, a cheaper approach. It sounds horrible to say that, but where MSBA regulations require you to have, for example, a survey. Well, yeah, they do for schematic design, but in this middle stage, that preferred schematic, we can use the town's GIS system. For preferred schematic, we'll have to do more test pits to see if there's ledge in the ground, or high groundwater, or things like that. We can do maybe two or three now, a few of them, don't use my numbers, please, but we can do a few of them. So I compare this to if you were doing commercial lending. You go to a lender, a lender says, okay, tell me about your project. You do. And at that point, you're giving, you know, good detail that they can rely on, but not the stuff that they'll rely on when they're writing checks and investing money. That's the difference, is that when we get to the point where we have to present stuff to stuff, when we have to present the project to MSBA with the detail that we're going to ask them to invest tens of millions of dollars, we have to provide them with a full instrument survey, we have to do more test pits, we have to do some hazmat testing, and the like. It was third or fourth, I think, that, these are all third parties that our professional team can't take a discount on. They have to pay them separately, so this isn't something that we could bargain down on. And I'll wrap up by just saying, I plead with you to support this article. The good faith of the Building Committee tried to do as much as we could with the appropriation that was made. I plead with you because if you're opposed to the concept of a new K through five school in that South School District, I could bore you to tears for the next half hour or more about why we probably should, although I don't know the scope of the project we're going to be building yet. But wait till we get to that point to hate it. Because right now, you've invested $750,000 to let us get to that point, and I'm here to tell you, we can't do it. You gave us a mandate to do. We need a little bit more to do it. We're going to be as frugal as we can with that money, and throughout the project, in fact. But please, I implore you to support this article, and I thank you when you do.
Okay, thank you, TJ. Dr. Rob, did you want to add anything? It's up to you.
No, thank you. I think TJ put it very, very well.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, time for technical questions. Mr. Lurie, please introduce yourself.
David Lurie, Precinct Six. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you. Question for anyone on the team for the project. I just want to understand, it mentions that there's redistricting as part of the scope of this added money. So I want to know, what is the order of magnitude of the redistricted plan, the one that includes consolidation of the Wilkins and the South School combined?
No, thank you for that question. So right now, we're in the beginning parts of the middle parts of the feasibility study. And one of the things we realized is that we really needed to bring a consultant in to take a look at all the options for redistricting. If we go from five elementary schools to four, which is part of the considerations of this project, it's going to mean redistricting. And we really wanted to bring a consultant in who could look at the demographics of the town, could look at the socioeconomics, could look at what different options for redistricting would be there, and those additional costs are part of that $250,000.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. I asked the question, what is the rough order of magnitude cost of the combined schools? If the recommendation is for a combined school, how much is the rough order of magnitude for the full project?
That hasn't been determined yet. We're still in the feasibility study for that right now.
Okay. Through you for question number two.
Sure, go ahead.
Is, I read the facilities master plan. I think it was, the most recent version was published in March, which is terrific that you're keeping up on all that. And the thing that I found fascinating is that you have a grade for every school in terms of when they need to be worked on, and there's in chronological order. And the Wilkins School is part of the scope of this project, but it jumps right over a school that is very bad, which is the middle school. So my question is, is how are we going to fund the combined school if we're supposed to be working on the middle school? How do you, what's the calculus for that?
So if you look at the facilities master plan, the middle school is next on the list. So once we finish this South School project, the middle school would be the next project on the list, roughly, you know, seven, seven years from now, five, seven years from now.
Five, seven years from now, you said?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Davina Owens. Please introduce yourself to the Town Meeting Reps.
Davina Owens, Precinct Four. I just had a quick question on page 634. It says if the town does pass the additional funding, it'll be ultimately reimbursed, provided the whole project passes its votes next spring. How is it being reimbursed? And if the whole project does not pass and get modified, is it possible to use the feasibility study done now again? Thank you.
The question, actually, you know what, Mr. Will, the additional funding would be reimbursable if the project passes, the 250, because the current feasibility agreement can't be amended. What was the second question? No, I'm sorry. The second part of that.
If the ultimate project doesn't pass next spring, and it needs to be amended, can this feasibility study still be used for an amended project?
Yeah, well, it could, certain, elements of it could be used, depending on what the amended project looked like. But typically, if there was a new project, it would need a new feasibility study. But certainly, elements around it could be used, surveys, kind of the engineering material that was developed.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Technical questions? Bob Cohen, do you have a microphone back there?
I do, thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Question is.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Robert Cohen. I'm in Precinct Five. How old is the South School, and how old is the Wilkinson School? How old is the South School?
Yeah, I think the South School is 1960, and it's had numerous renovations in the late 50s.
Oh, I know that. I toured that.
Yeah.
I'll talk about that in the other half. And how old is the Wilkinson?
Around.
Approximately. I'm not going to hold you.
Yeah, 1954.
So they're all built, they're tie-in buildings, right?
Yes, they're all buildings, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Mr. Scott Carraro.
Scott Carraro, Precinct Two. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to whoever can answer this question. Why do we have to go to this extent of redistricting, getting people upset that they're going to lose their neighborhood school? We're trying to save money, yet you're still going to hang on to the west of the Wilkins. So you're going to end up with the same amount. You're not saving anything. And why don't So, you're gonna end up with the same amount, you're not saving anything, and why don't we go to one of our neighbors, like Brockton, or a recent town that has built the school the size of the South School, and just get the plans from them? Why do we gotta always do the big and the better and out of control, when you can just grab something and stick with it that this town can afford? I wouldn't want my kids, if I lived on Moreau Street, to have to go halfway across town, because you're not gonna supply the buses for them, we're gonna end up, we're gonna end up with mothers, fathers, everybody disrupting their lives, because we're gonna try something. I had to go through the middle school problem when we were gonna snatch the west school and make it something else, and then my kids were gonna disrupt it. I wouldn't wanna see people buy their houses to go to their neighborhood school, and now we're gonna jam-pack this thing. And it just seems a little too aggressive for what that South School needs and the people in that area. But we're always looking beyond. Why can't we look and grab a set of plans that's updated and go from there?
Any answer to that?
Sure, Mr. Moderator. Through you to Selectman Carraro. I appreciate the question, and I have what I think is a good answer, you might disagree, Scott. The easy and simple answer is, because we signed an agreement with the MSBA saying exactly what we need to study, the broader answer that I think goes beyond what you were asking, but I think it actually provides a more correct answer, is that we're in feasibility studies, so when you say, "Why do we have to do more and why can't we just do this?", we're in feasibility study to study exactly that, whether we have to do more, or whether we should do more, or whether we can settle with less. Among the options that we have to study are just repairing what we have, so that it's livable as is. We also have to study an addition renovation option, several of them in our case. We also have to study new construction, of course. We have to study, you know, the whole range of options. From the ground up, we did the exact same thing with the high school. Anybody who followed that process from beginning to end will know that we did the exact same thing. The process is what it is with respect to how the MSBA works. We study everything from new locations to this, to buildings, and without getting into the broader thing, so broader answer to the question, why can't we just pick up this other building and use it for ours? This is what I meant when I said, "I implore you to vote for this, and wait till you see what our feasibility study results in before you hate it." Because for all I know, Scott, we're gonna come up with an option, I can tell you we're not, because I can see where we're going with this, it's not predetermined, of course, but I see where the results of feasibility study are going. And the reason why we can't, I can sell you on, you might not buy them, but I can sell you on them. For right now, all I ask you to do is allow us to live within the commitment we made to MSBA when we signed a feasibility study agreement, saying we would study all those options, and that's where we are now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're still in technical question period? I don't see anybody. Peter Murphy, you over there for a reason?
Yeah, technical review, Bob.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay. Wasn't sure if you're gonna try to steal the show over there, okay. All right, anybody else seeing none, technical questions, we're gonna move into... Bob, is that technical, or?
Technical.
Okay, pro and con debate, Mr. Cohen, and then Dave Lurie.
First of all, I'd like to thank...
Name, please.
Robert Cohen, Precinct 5. I trust this gentleman because he built this high school, and we happened to get financing at 1.2%. He'll remember that. He brought this building in on time and under budget. That's the first thing. The South School is nothing, it's almost in the category of the fire station, not as bad. The boiler is the original boiler, the hallways have wires hanging down from it, the front doors walking in has plexiglass that shakes. I wouldn't send my kid there, honestly. Whatever they decide, he said, "Let us go, let us finish this." And by the way, the SBA gives us 52 or 53%, that's a lot of money, but they also require it to follow their specs, and up to them to argue. But I do have the confidence in this gentleman because he's done it before, and right now, I would say to you, give him the money, let him finish his task, and let's get this thing on the road. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lurie, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, David Lurie, Precinct 6. Through you, well, I don't have to say through you.
This is pro and con debate.
Yeah, so, I'm totally in favor of this article, I think everybody should pass it, I just wanna get that on the record, because they do work hard, they do the right thing, their process is flawless, I have no problem with that at all. The problem that I just want everybody to be aware of going forward, to pay attention to, is that I actually went to some meetings, I recommend people pay attention, because we're gonna be impacted, there's gonna be some very big projects that we're gonna have to fund through debt exclusion. So, you need, it's really important that people, regardless of whether or not you have kids in the school system or not, we will all be impacted by it, so don't... The thing that I found, I went through, I went to one of the meetings, and DRA, our town architect, recommended I check out the MSBA website to get the rough order of magnitude numbers. So, I was able to find that around $600 per square foot is the ballpark number that you can build a budget around, or a rough estimate. With a combined school, it was told by us during meetings that it was gonna be a 95,000 square foot consolidated building, so you're looking at somewhere between 53 million and 63 million dollars for the project. 50% we might get back from MSBA, so some numbers, so figure 25 to 30 million dollars is what we're gonna be out of, you know, looking at funding through a debt exclusion. The reason why the middle school is important is because even though we were told tonight that it's about five to seven years out before we have to look at that, on the facilities master plan, it says in 2025, we're gonna be looking at the middle school. I just wanna, even if we do look at seven years out, because it is important that we push, spread the projects out enough so that we don't take that big a hit. The number to pay attention to is the high school that we funded. It's a 70 million dollar bond that we're paying through to 2036. If you combine the middle school that's listed at 90 million dollars in the facility master plan, combine that with the 60 million on this one, it's 150 million dollars. MSBA gives us half, that's 75 million added to the 70 million of the high school, so we're funding over whatever number of years until 2036, 150 million dollars worth of debt that we have to, we have to take on. So, I think it's critically important that we spread these projects out enough so that we don't take that big a hit on our, on the cost to run our households. That's the message I just wanna say, as we go forward, think about those things. And the middle school is 90 million, and that's being, that's being skipped over to take care of a Wilkins, which they plan to keep running as I think a district office, but that's for a later date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
If I could point one point of clarification.
Sure.
When I mentioned the seven years, I was thinking more along the lines of the project actually beginning, 2025 would be the SOI with the MSBA. So, similarly, with the South project, we started that SOI with the MSBA as we were finishing the high school. It would be a similar situation in '25, we'd start the SOI to begin the MSBA process for the middle school. So, he's right on, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rob. Matthew Callis, you're up.
Hi, Matthew Callis, Precinct 3. So, I see this as a necessary step to get a new school at the South, speaking as a parent of a student at the South, they need it, I won't go into all the reasons why, but just one example, things like the art rooms being turned into classrooms, because there's just not, there's just not enough room. So, a school is needed, this is a necessary step to that school. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, we're still in pro and con debate. Anybody else before we... I don't see anybody else, okay, we're gonna... Joe Soares, are you, rise into the microphone? Okay. Please state your name and precinct number, please.
My name is Joe Soares, Precinct 2. Doesn't anybody realize what's going on? We're paying a buck and a half gallon for gas, and, I'm sorry, we were paying a dollar...
You have to kinda try to pertain it to the article, Joe?
Yeah, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the article.
All right, I just heard gas there, I don't wanna argue with about it, but, you know, try to focus in on the article.
What I'm saying is, times are really pushing us to the wall. There's a lot of people here that can't afford what's going on. I mean, we're looking at another school. Now, I don't know about you, but I've been here since '72, and I've paid a lot of taxes in this town. And I don't wanna continue to keep paying, and I think, I bet, I'm sorry, the past speaker said it, "Hey, give us a break, give us a breather. We're all willing to pay tax, and we've all done it, but I think it's time that we have to look at the reality of what's going on, and let's spread it up high. Give us a break." That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none? Okay. Okay, yeah, wait a minute, I just, two thirds, right? This is, two thirds required. Okay, Article 67 does pass by a two-thirds majority. Seventy-six yes, thirteen no, one abstention.
Thank you.
All right? Okay, next up is Article 68, Security Upgrades, Intrusion Alarm Upgrades, and Interior Door Hardware, on the bottom of page 58, and I'm asking for a motion from Mr. Von Anokian.
That the town vote to appropriate $450,000 for the upgrade and installation of various security measures, including the replacement of the intrusion alarm systems at seven Stoughton Public School Buildings, excluding Stoughton High School, and updates of interior door hardware at seven Stoughton Public Schools Building, excluding Stoughton High School, for the purpose of updating the alarm panels and the number of alarm nodes and providing door security measures consistent with Stoughton High School's security standards, and that to meet this appropriation, $250,000 be transferred from Article 40 of the annual town meeting of May 2015, Project 10033, Wilkins Doors and... $200,000 be transferred from free cash.
Okay, the motion has been made, it has been seconded by John Inzavino. Can I have a finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted 10 to 0 to accept and recommend to town meeting Article 68.
Okay, thank you. Now, it's time for the presentation. Dr. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I turn your attention to page 639 in volume 2, has some of the details behind this. Very simply, this article is in two phases, intrusion alarm upgrades. We have intrusion alarm panels at the larger buildings, but they lack the capacity for additional sensors, they're maxed out in terms of the number of sensors they can have, and for additional user codes. Security sensors are those individual detection devices throughout the buildings that are motion sensors, entry point contacts, and other devices that detect leaks in boiler rooms, or temperature sensors for critical environments. And so, these need to be upgraded, we need to not only upgrade, but add to them in some of the larger buildings, particularly O'Donnell, Middle School, the Daw, and the Gibbons, and then in general for the other schools' sensors, here or there. And the second part is interior door hardware. What we found is we have done lockdown drills coming out of COVID, and one of the things that we're hearing in the lockdown drills is that because the doors in all the other schools except here at the high school have different locking mechanisms, different lock sets, it's a danger, because we can't always lock those doors quickly, and having the different kinds of locks in all the different buildings makes it confusing. And so, the second part of the article would allow us to replace the lock sets in all the doors and bring them up to the standard code that's here at the high school, and that's really become the state-of-the-art standard. So, that's it in a nutshell, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Rob. Time for technical questions, Mr. Starr, see you, please.
Edward Starr, Precinct 6. Is there any idea of putting metal detectors in the schools?
That's really beyond the scope of this article, but...
Metal detectors?
Mr. Starr, what Dr. Rob is saying, they're not talking about metal detectors right now?
Well, I figured it's part of the security system.
Well, not for this article, okay? Point well taken, I understand, but right now, we're just talking about the upgrades. Okay, thank you. Anybody else, technical questions? Seeing none? Okay, Mr. Lurie.
David Lurie, Precinct 6. Through you, Mr. Moderator, actually to anyone who can answer, whether the superintendent or town accountant. Is 450,000, 250 coming, 250,000 coming from Article 40 from 2015, and 200 in free cash, how much of this article is contributing to our net school spending number?
Can anybody answer that?
I'm just trying to think right now. The, of the 450, I would venture to say the part coming out of free cash, because that can be used for security improvements.
I think Mr. Lurie has an answer for us.
But he may have a better answer than I do.
Mr. Lurie?
Yes, I concur with that, Mr. Moderator, yes. The debt services for net school spending, that's recognized annually, so the debt service that we pay on school projects, that principal balance is recognized for net school spending. But the free cash, once that 250 is spent, then that would be, that would count towards net school spending, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, my second question is, since we are getting about half of this amount available for net school spending, when $5 million came into our general fund with the, with the monies, the new monies that showed up, why didn't the town look at reducing the operating budget enough, you know, 100,000 on the town side, 150 from the school side, just making up numbers? If they reduce the operating budget by that amount, we'd have 100% of this article available for net school spending. Why couldn't, why couldn't the town look at that, so that we'd have all this project? Because this kind of project is available for net school spending if it comes from the right source.
Well, let's see if we can get an answer for that? I'm not sure we can answer that. Dr. Rob?
Over time, as the security is borrowed, the capital becomes part of net school spending. It's just over the years that it's borrowed. We did this as a separate security article, because it's above and beyond our budget.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Molly Cochran, then you, George. Oh, just take, okay, that's okay, that's all right. George Stalinski, excuse me for mispronouncing your name, George Stalinski.
Feel free, you can call me anything you want, except late for dinner. George Stalinski, Precinct 2, just a quick question, in this article, you mentioned that the, we wanna do some work on some of the doors in the schools. Didn't we vote at the last special meeting, a town meeting, for security doors at some of the schools already? And isn't this a duplication?
This is in addition to, so the last special town meeting, we voted for vestibules at the Gibbons and the Daw to put in a secondary entrance. This is in addition to that, this is the other exterior doors and doors in the schools, this is not including that.
Thank you.
Excuse me, interior doors.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none? We're gonna go, if we're ready for the vote? Okay, we're ready for the vote, please vote now.
Oh, can I? All right.
I'm sorry, Dr. Rob, did you wanna summarize?
I do, I wanna, 10 seconds, but I...
Well, we're voting right now, we're voting.
Is it too late?
We're voting, I'm sorry, Dr. Rob.
All right, all right, okay. Oh, thank you.
All right. We're voting now. Just trying to move it along.
No, no, I'm good, yeah.
I'm sorry, let me get the, yeah, we're just trying to move too fast, I think, hang on, gotta catch up here. What's...
No, I'm good, I learned long ago when to keep my mouth shut.
Okay, the motion of 68, Article 68 does pass, 81 yes, six no, zero abstentions.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll try to slow it down a little bit. Thank you, Dr. Rob, for your presentation. Okay, let me just look where we're at here. Article 69 was dismissed. Okay, now we turn to page 59, Article 70. We now get into the citizen petitions. Okay, we have a, standby, we have a, uh, call for quorum. Okay, the, the vote that was concluded just seconds ago, we have eighty-seven people that voted. Okay, so if everybody, let's lock the doors. Don't let anybody go. Okay. As I mentioned, uh, page fifty-nine, Article seventy, we are into the petition, excuse me, the citizen petitioned articles. All right, so... I see Mr. Murphy has risen. Uh, his motion is on page sixty, starting on page sixty. I'm gonna, I'm sorry. Well, the article starts at fifty-nine, but the motion itself is on page sixty. Mr. Murphy, please read your proposed motion.
What's that? Well, how long is it?
For those that don't know me, I'm Peter Murphy, Precinct Two.
If you want, Peter, you could either read the entire motion or you could just say, read a couple of lines and say, as, as written in the warrant. It's up to you.
Uh, proposed motion is listed on page eighty, Articles, uh, seventy. Is printed in the warrant.
Page sixty.
Uh, six, yeah.
Sixty, six-zero.
Six-zero, that's what I said.
Okay. Gotcha. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Prior to two thousand seventeen, there were multiple previous, previously approved borrowing and cash articles that had either not been acted upon or money had been left on, uh, left over for more than, uh, ten years. In the meantime, the town was paying interest on borrowed money or borrowing, taking money from free cash to pay for future articles. I proposed the same article and got the required signatures to be presented at the two thousand seventeen annual town meeting. Prior to town meeting, was vetted before the select board and approved three to one. Further vetted with the finance committee, municipal regulations committee, and was unanimously approved by both, as stated in the two thousand seventeen town meeting warrant, Article fifty-three. This article was then approved by town meeting. It was not until two thousand and twenty-one, I was informed, the previous administration did not act on this article since it did not contain the word "bylaw." So this being resubmitted as a bylaw, this article will limit the time approval of borrowing articles. Once an article has been approved by town meeting and town meeting has been certified for the upcoming fiscal year, the clock will start ticking for the fiscal year. As an example, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or less will have three years to start spending the money and must be completed within the end of the fourth fiscal year. A one-year extension may be granted by the select board to complete the article. Otherwise, the money will be rescinded. Over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars will have a sunset of four years to start spending the money and have to be completed by the end of the sixth year. As an ex, uh, an extension, as an extension may be needed to be granted by the select board. Otherwise, the money will be rescinded. Note, the funding of these articles not spent past sunset that have not been extended will no longer be available unless resubmitted for town meeting approval. Any state or federal grants will be exempt from this sunset requirement since they may have, uh, may also have their own restrictions. Any labor negotiation agreements will be excluded from this provision. Any exclusion, an exclusion could be stipulated as part of the article when submitted for town meeting approval. Every year, there may be an article to resend unissued borrowing authorization, but not guaranteed. This year, it was Article twenty-three. That Article twenty-three, the total that, if you go back to Article twenty-three, you can see the reference to that, was a total of five-hundred-and-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. Borrowing money that was reallocated this year was Article forty-two. And I'm not gonna go through the various things, but you can see that that was a total of eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twelve dollars and forty-six cents. Article forty-three was forty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Article forty-four was eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-one thirty-five. I just caught this at the tail end. Article forty, that went, uh, I'm sorry, Article sixty-eight, that captured two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for doors, windows at the Wilkinson School. This now brings that whole total to eight-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. That was money that was sit, that's been over three to four years sitting around that we paid interest on, not doing anything for the town. That's the purpose of this sunset article. It's to come into a fact that if you have, it's the same idea, if you go and you apply for credit cards, that's a liability against you. We're trying to do prudent spending here, uh, prudent accounting. I'm, uh, all set for any questions.
Thank you, Peter. All right, we're into technical, uh, I should, first I gotta ask for a second? Is there a? Seconded by who? Mr. Stalinski, Precinct Two. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Technical questions? Mr. Scardino?
Uh, Mr. Murphy or whoever can answer this question. How would this apply, assuming it's voted tonight? Is it only on articles in the future or the ones that are on the books now?
It would be in the, going forward in the future. Because it hasn't been approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Cave?
Apologies, I have two questions, generally in support of, of the concept of this. But because it's petitioned, I just want to make sure there's a couple of things I'm kind of curious about. First of all, uh, just the very first lines of, of the proposed motion have any article approved that has two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars? Oh, jeez. Now, yeah, okay.
Here we go.
Um, or less, will have a sunset of approval of three years, starting at the beginning of the upcoming fiscal year the article has been approved. Does that, so articles approved in twenty-twenty-three, like tonight, theoretically, theoretically, like, or twenty-twenty-four? Uh, that, that, the, the clock would start in the fiscal year of July first, twenty-twenty-four, correct?
The, uh, the year the article is approved, whatever the article is, the borrowing article, and that town vote gets certified, that town meeting gets certified, that's when the clock starts ticking, that fiscal year. So, for example, uh, you know, was it June, uh, July first is when the clock will start ticking for this? This will not incorporate any articles in this book, but next year's book it will.
Let me, let me just be a little clear about the, the question I'm having. So the fiscal year, this, right now, we're in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. And we're, we're making Article or twenty-twenty-four. If it's the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, then we, and that's the, the clock starting, then it would, it, the clock would start a year before we even voted it.
No, the intent is that when this gets voted, this is gonna get, this is for the twenty-twenty-four, uh, town meeting session. So what happens is articles that came upon this, they didn't know about this. It would actually be for twenty-twenty-five.
I'm, I apologize, I just wanted to ask the question because I still don't feel like, like maybe I, I might not be asking the question correctly. But theoretically, we have a, a May twenty-twenty-four town meeting. It takes place, it takes place in twenty-twenty-four, but the fiscal year for that, for that book is twenty-twenty-five.
Correct.
With, what day is the date, start date of, of this clock?
That would start July, uh, first, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. So that, that was one question, I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose ten months or, you know, eleven months on this clock. And the other one is just to, to, to town council, uh, through you, Mr. Moderator, to town council and the town accountant, uh, in just general form of the article, is there anything within the, the, uh, the form of the article that you have any concerns about, uh, with regard to, you know, just implementing it? Uh, not, not the, uh, you know, the, the material of it, but just the form?
Um, Mr. Town Council, go ahead.
I'm happy to defer to the town accountant after, but I'm happy to go first as well.
Sure, go right ahead.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, um, let me offer two comments. One is, uh, I don't see any reason to not allow town meeting to vote on this. So I want to make that clear, that there's nothing patently illegal about this. Uh, and so town meeting can vote on it. However, uh, it's cast as a proposed bylaw. In my opinion, it is not proposing a bylaw. It doesn't propose to insert anything in your bylaws, it doesn't propose any bylaw language. And so I'm not commenting on the policy or substance as, as per your question, but on the, the mere form of the petitioned article. Um, so that has been my opinion and just for the benefit of town meeting and, and for, uh, Selectman Cave, uh, I've also conferred with the Attorney General's Office, the Municipal Law Unit, as well as the Department of Revenue, um, and DLS, uh, and they concur in that opinion. So they will not review this as a bylaw submission. Uh, and so while I have no objections to town meeting voting, uh, the outcome of a successful vote will be that this is advisory and aspirational, and the board may, of course, take that into consideration. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bill Rowe, did you have any ad that you wanted to?
Um, well, there, there's a question, question of the definition of what spending is. I mean, if we have a long-term contract, if we enter into a long-term contract for three, four, five years, let's say for a traffic construction project, um, is that considered spent when the, uh, when we enter into the contract? Or, or, um, does that mean the, um, what happens if the, we dump the full amount of the contract within the, within the time period? And, um...
Can I answer that?
Uh, just one second. Are you all set, Mr. Rowe? You're still going? Okay.
That was my main concern, how we define spending. And, um, you know, if we have a contract that's out there, we can't just cancel it. Or, you know, what if the select board decides not to approve the extension? Then we're, we're still bound by the contract, so that's, that's my main concern right there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowe. Uh, Mr. Murphy, did you want to respond to that quickly?
Sure, because I believe that in this here, I put this, the stipulation that you can put that stipulation in the article when it comes before town meeting, that it does not have a sunset attached to it. So you can override that. The other thing is, anything over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, if it was to go long-term, the select board, in their wisdom, they could extend it. It's stipulated in the article.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else? I have Janice Schneider, did you want to have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Janice Schneider, Precinct Six. My question has to do with the mechanics, and you partially answered it, so please bear with me. As somebody brings a motion into, in the future, does that motion have to then specify what the sunset would be?
No, it, it actually just the reverse. If they want to supersede the sunset, they would put a comment saying not to be covered under the sunset or some words to that effect. So they could exclude themselves from the sunset. If they don't put that in there, I mean, uh, I'll take, for example, DPW buys equipment every year. And if they don't put that comment in there, then after, whatever the, the value of the, uh, the article is, it would fall under the sunset, unless, for example, if they're buying a specialized vehicle that's over, it doesn't matter. They say not to be covered under the sunset clause. So that way they, it would be extended. For example, I think the, uh, actually the fire department, they have like a two-year wait on a fire truck just to get their order in. So they could exclude themselves from that by put stipulating no sunset clause, uh, to pertain to this article or something to that effect.
So... Somebody who is presenting an article can opt out of what you're trying to do with this petition?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joe Scardino, you already had a question, I'll give you one quick, one, one...
Uh, this actually is for town council, since town council, uh, informed us that he's had extensive discussions about the format of the bylaw or proposed putative bylaw. Um, Mr. Town Council, um, by adding language, adding this section to the town code, uh, or something similar to that, does that cure the defect?
Go ahead, Town Council.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker. No, in my opinion, it does not. Uh, it's not sufficient to actually propose language to be inserted into the town code as bylaw language that would be reviewed, uh, under Forty Thirty-two by the Attorney General. So, no, that does not cure it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is Pat Colburn.
Pat Colburn, Precinct Four. I'm just a little confused, um, when we have articles, some projects just never begin for whatever reason. That makes sense, it's very easy to just say after three years over, you have to resubmit, rescind it. We've never borrowed a cent in that case, it hasn't cost us a penny. But in a, a case where a project's begun, maybe they just finished it and had extra? Or maybe the time just ran out on them and the select board didn't, um, give them the extension? I'm not clear on what that process would be. Who would actually rescind it and tell them, you know, you're done? Um, or is it just basically going to be what we're already doing now between the town accountant and FinCom, um, saying that money hasn't been used, we're gonna use it for something else?
Well, to answer your question, I revert back to the, for example, Article twenty-three. Uh, somebody must have gone to the town accountant to ask, okay, what's the story with the, uh, rehab of a beloved playground? That was nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-two. Someone went to DPW, the, uh, Sewer INI, twenty-eight-thousand-seven-twenty-five. Uh, the Wilkinson bathroom, that was three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. That was back in May, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, you can probably give a little summary.
So, right, what I'm saying is, there's multiple articles that people went and they took the money for to use to pay for their article. So they must have gone to the accountant to check to see if that money was available.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to clarify, but, but that's being done now? So the town accountant, I believe, Bill, don't you contact various departments to see if they're done with a project? And that's how you guys get creative in terms of how you fund?
Yeah, so every year, I send out, as a matter of fact, there's a schedule in the book, I send that schedule out to, um, department heads. And, uh, the department heads are the ones that certify whether a project is complete or not. So depart, uh, departments, department heads will respond, uh, yes, complete, uh, or in, or incomplete. And then, um, if it's complete, then I, if I can use the unexpend, the surplus funds, and I try to look at this year's warrant and assign the surplus funds where, where possible to new upcoming articles. But yeah, we do that every, at the beginning of, um, every calendar year, like January or February. We survey the depart, we, we send out the articles to the department heads and say, uh, you know, is this closed? Is it complete, is it incomplete? And they respond. And if they don't respond, then, you know, I chase them a little more, so...
Thank you. So, so you proposing something different or are you proposing that we do the same? That's just what I need clarification on.
Basically, with this article, the purpose of this article is to put a line in the sand. If you look at these articles that I pointed out, right? Some are over four, five, six, seven, eight years old. I mean, if I, previous town meetings, we had stuff sitting out there for ten years. For example, Article sixty-eight that you approved tonight took two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, that was May, two thousand and fifteen. We were paying interest on that, on that money sitting there. We were paying interest on that, on that money sitting there. So, that's, it's not the two hundred and fifty, what did that also cost us in additional interest? So, that's, the whole idea is to start to look at what just, you know, what we've spent and where, what's happening with it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, both. Eric Coleman, you're next, and Denise.
Eric Coleman, Precinct Five, through you to the town, the attorney.
Town Council.
Town Council, thank you. Through, you said the town meeting can vote on this, but yet, in your opinion, and from speaking with the various people in the government, this would not really have any effect. So, would you consider this a non-binding referendum?
Go ahead, Mr. Town Council.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker. As I mentioned earlier, I consider it advisory, so yes, non-binding and advisory only.
Okay. Given that to the maker of the article, do you still want to go through with this at this point, and have us vote on it?
Yes, I mean, it's, to me, it's important, it's, I've, I've come back here a second time, and like I said, the first time, because a few individuals did not follow through with this, and that was a previous board.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next up, Denise, did you have a question? Denise Bronson?
Yes, it's Denise, Precinct, Precinct Two, it's ten thirty-four. I, I asked that we adjourn.
We're so close in here, I'll leave it up to. Yeah, we, we have some, there's a motion currently on the floor. We can talk about that after this motion gets resolved. All right, so.
Mr. Moderator.
Who's calling, who's calling me?
Here I am, right.
Mr. Cohen, we're into technical questions right now. Just keep it moving, everybody.
I have a technical question for Mr. Rowe. When these articles come up and there's money left over, do we take that money, or is it just left in that? We don't borrow on, say, a ten thousand dollar surplus we have, because we didn't use it. Is that money borrowed, or is it still sit there until we're ready to take it? Am I, I'm trying to, do you understand what I'm?
Sure. So, there's a couple of options, what we can do with surplus borrowed money. If it's over fifty thousand dollars in surplus bond proceeds, then it has to sit there until we find another project, a like project, that we can use it for. If it's fifty thousand dollars or less, we can use that, we have used that, to pay off existing debt service. So, I, the treasurer may, you know, will pay the debt service, and then I'll shift that money over to the, to pay the current debt service out of the budget.
So, that's at your discretion?
Fifty thousand dollars or less. Well, it's at the Select Board, the Select Board.
Right, the both of yous.
The Select Board has authorized us to use it for debt ser, proceeds of fifty thousand dollars or less for debt service. And then, for CPC funds, the CPC and the Select Board have to authorize that use. So, we've done that.
So, anything over fifty thousand?
Anything over fifty sits, until we have another project, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with technical questions? Seeing none, let's move in pro and con debate or comments, anybody? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Are you ready? Please vote now. No, the threshold is simple majority. Thank you for asking, simple majority. All right, that was Article seventy, passes. Fifty ye, fifty, yes, thirty-nine, no.
Thank you.
Five extensions. You have to use a microphone, so everybody can hear you, I'm sorry.
George Stalinski, Precinct Two, I'd like to move that we adjourn for this evening and reconvene Monday night at seven o'clock.
Same location, same time.
Same location, same time, same, whatever.
Okay, I'll take a voice vote on that. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? I'm going to declare that affirmative, yes. You gotcha. Everybody have a good night, thank you for coming. Don't forget to come back Monday.